Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our regular scheduled agenda, Board of County Commissioners Meeting. Before we get started, if you have any cell phones or other electronics, please mute them or silence them in some way. Ms. Sarah, if you will.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity today to come and serve the great people of Walton County. We pray that you will give us wisdom and patience and strength to make the right decision in every case. We pray and we ask your blessing on those that serve this county and our nation, both here and in foreign soil. In all these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item is to deal with any additions and deletions. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for additions under the county attorney of item 10, which is an informational item regarding some photographs that were presented to the board at the last meeting. And number 11, approval of contract for maintaining multi-use trails in Walton County. And under admin, as a request approves a draft work task order for work to be performed, the EOC. And just a word of comment, we recognize the importance of getting information on the agenda initially. Unfortunately, there are times when issues arise that we feel are time-sistent. But please never hesitate that if there's an issue that we're asking you to add to the agenda and you feel it would be more appropriate to delay it, please let us know that. We simply want to move initiatives forward and sometimes we get stuff later than we would like to get on the agenda when we do produce it, which we do obviously last week. So we do recognize the importance of getting those things there as quickly as we can. And we also recognize the fact that there may be instances where the board would feel it more appropriate to postpone it to a later date, and we're certainly fine with that. So with that, just being said, we recommend those changes to the agenda.
Motion to approve. A motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries. Do we need approval on the agenda? A motion and second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Is there any public comments concerning any agenda item? Okay, come forward, state your name for the record. Please direct your comments to the board as a whole. Do not ask individual commissioners nor speak to the audience. Thank you.
For the record, Alan Osborne. Chairman, I came before you last time about a question about the ordinance 2014-06. I got a copy of the signed ordinance this week from the county and it says in there on item number 10 that you've also adopted here to exhibit A as part of the ordinance. Exhibit A, according to what I was given, Mr. Chairman, by the county, includes a road and open space master plan, and there was no hearing or advertisement of that portion of it. So either my exhibit A that was given to me by the county is either incorrect or the exhibit A actually was adopted into your ordinance. And that would have given the adoption of roads as open space, it would have been the adoption of a master traffic plan. So either we're unclear or that wasn't advertised.
Mr. David Shavvy?
Yeah, I'm looking into it. I just realized what he was talking about early into last week, first part of this week, and I'm looking into it.
So if that would, I would ask the board to either rescind item 10 or to correct the ordinance because that part of the ordinance was not heard. I don't have an issue with the rest of the ordinance. But just that exhibit A, we've never had a hearing on open space. And it was my understanding that that was going to be as part of a compliance hearing, was the open space issues. So that's what I was led to believe. But if indeed exhibit A has been adopted, I would like to know.
Okay. So I have a question. So what you're saying is that with the E2 change that we adopted that day, which was just a tweaking of the acreage.
Correct.
When it went to the Department of Economic Opportunity, attached with that E2 change was an outline of the open space calculations and the roadways, saying that we had actually adopted that open space as well.
Well, it said, item nine said the application included a traffic analysis. Item 10 said, based on the foregoing proposed change, the application and composite exhibit A are heretofore incorporated into the Sandestin DRI Development Order. Well, composite exhibit A is what was listed online, is a traffic study by Tim Whaler, two pages, and then a single-page map of the master traffic plan. So that's what I was given by the county as exhibit A. So there seems to be some conflict, but I would just like to put in the record that we didn't have that. And if we did, my request is it be removed from the ordinance.
Okay, allow staff research it.
If that's the case, then we need to send a letter to the Department of Vrmental Opportunity and say, you know, that this is merely an E2 change and either define what the documents mean, but make it clear that we didn't adopt, because that's what the compliance hearing is about, is the open space. Is that correct, Wayne?
Yes, well, that's a part of it. But, you know, the E2 change was advertised for just the E2 change, which was actually just the acreage reconciliation with the parcel 224. So I just got word this this morning, so we'll definitely look into it and find out what exactly Mr. Osborne is talking about. And then we'll take necessary actions after that if need be.
Can you report back to us at the next BCC meeting on that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Mr. Riley? Don Riley?
There is an item on the county attorney's agenda, I believe, or several items, concerning retroactive approval of contracts, of which we're all aware. Commissioner Pritchard called me yesterday morning to tell me that he was certainly aware of the problems and that he and Mr. Jones were working on seeing to it that they developed policies and procedures such that there would be no future recurrence, at least in this fashion, of such fairly, I think, egregious oversights. There are three members of this commission who were not on the board at that time when these actions took place. And in fact, one of the principal problems, if not the principal problem, is that those contracts never came before you. I don't know how law firms do, but I do know from long experience with banks and with other, acting as a fiduciary myself in other merus, that part and parcel of the initiation and acceptance of such undertakings include doing due diligence on both parties' part, and that includes the attorneys in question in this particular case. They should have ensured that those contracts came before this body at that time and were approved. There are three of you who are not here, and it has been my practice in the past, in my service on multiple boards, it continues to be my practice on the boards on which I presently serve. And in the event that I serve on future boards, that will continue to be my practice as well, which is to say that I will abstain from voting on past actions by predecessors when I was either A, not present, or B, more importantly, when I'm trying to correct erroneously, I think, trying to correct the errors of which I was no part and had no information at the time. I would respectfully submit that those three of you who were not on that board should abstain from voting in the first place, and in the event that you disagree with my philosophy in this, that you oppose these things. I'm given to understand from several sources that there is significant question as to whether it is in fact legal for you to take this action today. There have been questions raised as to the ethics that are involved in this. I am not an authority on either of those questions, but I think that there are competent authorities beyond this venue who will be asking, who almost certainly will rule on both of these issues. I always try to respect the first rule of holes, and that is when you find yourself in one, for goodness sakes, put the shovel down and quit digging. We do have a hole here. I sympathize with the plight that you have. Nonetheless, I think you're going to end up embarrassing yourselves and embarrassing the citizens of Walton County and provide for the future embarrassment of this body as it continues beyond your periods of service, whenever those may end. If you were to in fact retroactively approve things that I think we all know were not properly handled, and I do not believe that retroactive approval is the appropriate thing for you to do today. I would urge that you not do so. There were conflicts of interest in this. I think there's absolutely no question in reading the minutes, the transcripts of your executive sessions, that it is an absolute conflict for a law firm to represent conflicting positions, conflicting interests, to represent the TDC on the one hand and to represent this body on the other hand, and to argue that this body should set aside an offer to this body in settlement of your claim against BP in hopes of getting a larger settlement with very little tendered in the way of argument to support that, evidence to support a decision of more money, when other counsel, not representing both sides, clearly indicated that this should not be done. This at the time, when everyone present knew that were a negotiation to ensue, that BP had informed quite publicly that the offer to the TDC was off the table. That same firm indicated that the offer to the TDC was better than you were likely to get in court, and it was at least 96, 98% of the best possible scenario for them to advocate on one hand to invalidate that offer, and on the other hand, to argue that the county should concomitantly do this by asking for more money, I think constitutes a clear conflict of interest. Y'all shouldn't approve this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move forward. Have approval of the consent agenda? A move?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda, we have Mr. Bill Bard with the Friends of the Walton County Animal Shelter that would like to make a presentation on behalf of that organization.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Bill Bard, and I come before you today as president of Friends of the Walton County Animal Shelter. We're a nonprofit 501(c)(3) that works closely with the shelter in an effort to provide things that people may want to donate to help the animals, to help the shelter out, and to acquire some items that they need and don't have. Back in, a little history on this, back in December, Lois contacted me and told me that the price of oxygen which is necessary during the surgeries has gone through the roof, has skyrocketed. And she said, "Bill, if we have an oxygen concentrator, we can cut that cost down and we can keep the costs for adoption fees low and we can keep ourselves within our budget." Since the shelter opened up, back in '08, I believe is when it happened, '01, '10? Our euthanasia rate at that point was extremely high. We were shipping the dogs to Chipley. They had 10 days, dogs and cats, and 10 days later, that organization did what they want with them. Normally, they were euthanized. Our euthanasia rate at that point was probably close to 75%. Under Lois's leadership for the last four or five years, the hard work of our shelter on a shoestring budget, they have been able to reduce that euthanasia rate to last year where they only euthanized 490 animals. That's a phenomenal, phenomenal accomplishment. I've done some research and called some other municipalities out there. When I was on the committee we had, we had a animal control committee for a while. And even these large organizations with $2 million-plus budgets haven't been able to do that kind of reduction in the rate that we've been able to do here. Along those lines, we feel that good deeds should go rewarded. And when Lois came to me, of course, I realized that we would be saving money, that would keep the rate low. Friends's mission is basically to just do just that. We want to close the door to the shelter as best we can. And of course, we want to keep the door open on the other end to get as many adopted out to loving families as we possibly can. We'll do what we can to do stuff like that. But more than just that, when a good deed is done, and it needs to be rewarded and recognized. And so, on behalf of Friends of the Walton County Animal Shelter and dedicated to the memory of our founder Ella G. Caro, in recognition of a job, a good job done of reducing the euthanasia rate and in order to help keep adoption fees low, which in turn will help more shelter animals find loving homes and save animal lives, I present to you, Lois, this oxygen concentrator. And what I have here is a picture of, actually, both of us in front of it. You can actually call it a Christmas present. She's had it since December, so it is a belated Christmas present. And we have this plaque in memory of our founder Ella, which we hope you'll place above it. So thank you so much for what you've done. And on behalf of our community who helped raise the money for this, it's, people in this community are very, very giving when it comes to helping the shelter out. And it was no problem for us to raise the money for this item. You're welcome.
I'm Lois from the Animal Shelter, of course, and Ella meant so much to me when she was here. She was a mentor, and also she was, she just helped me on everything, making decisions. Sometimes I would get, you know, you need somebody to say, "Yeah, that is the right thing." And anytime that I called Ella, she was always there for support. And when we first opened the shelter in 2010, she called me one day and she goes, "Lois, is anything missing? Do you need anything up there?" You know, and I said, "You know, Ella, it would be great if we had an exercise area out here for the dogs that would be fenced in so that we wouldn't, in case something slipped a collar or something, it wouldn't get away." She goes, "Okay, well, let me get back with you on that." Well, the next day, she called me. She goes, "Give me some quotes on that, Lois, will you?" And I said, "Really?" And she said, "Yes, give me some quotes." So we went ahead and I did that, and boom, she did it, and we have used it every day. And it's been wonderful for our animals. And Bill has always been there for me as a shoulder to cry on whenever I needed some help, and he would always act. I was sitting at my house one afternoon, watching my husband on his oxygen, and I got to thinking about, wow, that would help us, you know, if we had one of those. And I went and talked to some distributors and everything, and I got with Bill on it, and we got figures together, and we seen, hey, this would make a significant difference. And so he agreed to help us get one, and I appreciate everything he's done. He's been there for us for everything, and I couldn't ask for a better Friends of the Animal Shelter than him. I'm telling you, he's been great. And I want to take this opportunity to thank y'all for everything y'all have done for animal control. And even though that we now opened the sheriff's department, you know, we still love each and every one of y'all. Y'all have been great to us, and we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lois. Mr. Jones?
Mr. Chairman, our next item is regarding a request from the Walton County School District. If you recall, at the March 11th meeting, Superintendent Carleen Anderson came to the board with the idea of perhaps utilizing our South Walton Annex for one school board meeting each month. We subsequently met with Ms. Anderson, her staff, to formulate their request and provide a response to it. What you have in your package is staff's recommendation, and that's five components to it. One is that they be allowed to use the South Walton Annex boardroom on the third Tuesday of each month, unless it conflicts with a scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting. To that end, we do not have a standard cost for utilizing that room, so we can charge them nothing. However, there will be utilities used and those other things that go along with just opening the space. So you may consider a $100 per meeting charge for that. Item two would be the require the school district to contract with the sheriff's office or the bailiffs to provide at least one bailiff for the duration of each meeting. That bailiff will have the responsibility of locking down and securing the building, the facility after each meeting. We would require the school district to contract with our county IT staff to attend each meeting, to provide operational and technical support of all of the audiovisual equipment. We would request the district pay the BCC $150 per meeting for live streaming and video recording of each meeting. Let me back up to three. The reason we're asking our folks to be there is because they're the ones that know the equipment, they know what it takes to make it work, and if something goes wrong with it, they're going to have to call them anyway. So this would allow the school board to utilize them on their time with the school board contracting to pay them for that work. We will provide the school district a DVD of each meeting, at which time they would become the custodian of record for all public records requests. And any additional DVDs they would need would be on an agreed-upon price, depending on the quantity of and timeliness of those needs. So that is our request and recommendation. If you agree with those, the only thing we'd ask you to do is determine if you would like to charge them the $100 per meeting in addition to what's been listed there.
Question. Would, so they would be paying our IT staff, would they be paying them overtime, or would they be...
They would be through a contract. They would actually not be on our payroll at that time. That allows, it's just allowing our folks to work with the school board at whatever agreed-upon rate. I'm sure they'll be reasonable on that.
How many times a year perhaps do we use or ask to use school facilities? I know we use them during emergency evacuation. Is that, you know? I was trying to think, you know, when do we? I know we've used them for debates once or twice, you know? I think, you know, maybe $100 is reasonable to cover the cost of the building.
Ms. Anderson?
You do use our facilities during hurricane or extreme weather conditions, I think, and those who work with us on the emergency management, maybe once to twice a year, average. When Mr. Jones and I were talking about the facilities cost, I was honest and said that we have facilities used for our schools when anyone borrows them because although they're public buildings, you know, they belong to the public, they can use them, you still have the tax dollar set aside for the power, the utilities of all sorts. And I don't see it unfair to have a charge, even though y'all are generous to us, allowing us to use it. We also understand the cost to you. So that is not something that I have a problem bringing to our board.
You think $100 is reasonable?
We usually, that's an average fee we charge for our facilities, and we do have a facilities fee schedule. And again, even though the buildings do belong to the public, you still have to pay with tax dollars the cost of the utilities for those buildings.
Sir, did you have anything to comment on? Yes, sir, you do. State your name for the record.
I didn't do that. I didn't state my name. Do you need me? Everybody knows you.
I think she knows you.
Shane Supple, Recreation Director. I did want to point out that we do use seven gyms during basketball season for about six weeks at no charge for rec basketball.
That's true. Those are our children. When we serve our children, we do make allowances.
Board's wishes?
And commissioners, obviously, since I sit on the school board, if there's going to be a contract drafted, I'll have another attorney look at it on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Okay, make sure I understand the motion. With the hundred, $100?
With the $100 per use fee.
Why don't we say pursuant to the four items listed in the agenda submission?
With the $100. Pursuant to that, with the $100.
I'm sorry, five. I can't count.
Attorney, not an accountant, right?
Yes, sir. Ask Ms. Anderson about me getting a calculator out.
He's going to count it, too.
We have a motion. We've got a second. Okay, we've got a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, the next item, as if you recall, at the last board meeting, Mr. Jay Howard approached the board regarding a 50-acre tract in Mossy Head Industrial Park. Subsequent, we asked Mr. Howard to bring some more detailed information and to meet individuals with commissioners. Subsequent to that meeting, we received an email from him, which is in your packet, that they are no longer interested in the property for whatever reason. But we thanked him for his interest and asked him to contact us if there's anything we could do again. And while we're talking about Mossy, I just wanted to show you, just to be sure everybody's aware of where we are in the process and the exciting things that are going on there between the Loves, the hotel, the restaurant, the truck dealership, the tire dealership, and the used truck dealership. All of those projects have been approved. I think our calculations is they're somewhere around 160 to 170 jobs, probably $30 million of investment that'll come from those, about $70 million in annual sales we're anticipating. So just an update of where we are and what you've approved to date in Mossy Head.
Can you forward that map to my office as well?
Yeah, and I've got you one printed as well for your office.
I'd like to put it in my newsletter.
Okay. Yeah, we can get you that. So there's no action requested on that. Next item regarding the polyengineering. In July of 2007, the county entered into an agreement with polyengineering to provide design engineering services regarding the 250,000 gallon per day wastewater treatment facility at the Mossy Head Industrial Park. Section 4B of this agreement provides for preliminary design phase, which resulted in the existing design that we have in place. Section 4C and D respectively provide for final design and bid phases. At the February 11th BCC meeting, we, the board, approved moving this project forward and begin the bid process. The next step in that process is to get these plans finalized and get them ready to go to bid. We have a, we had legal to review this document to be sure it was still in good order and binding, and they agreed that it was. So our request is that we issue a notice to proceed to polyengineer on the final design bid documents, which will lead us into the construction phase. The cost of that work is outlined in the contract, as it were, in 2007. They have requested just to make some minor adjustments to those costs due to time. What we need done now will be about $12,200. When we move through this whole process of bid documents, bidding out, and the construction, their fee will be about 3% or 3.5% of the construction costs. So we're probably looking at somewhere in the $80,000 to $110,000 range, depending on how much the whole project is. But what we're asking to do is your approval to issue them a notice to proceed with the next step, which will get us to the bid documents and the bid process.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back in October, at the October 8th regular meeting, the board selected a negotiating team to work with our Mr., where is his name? Jerry Copeland, and to negotiate the fire rescue contracts. At that time, you appointed Mr. Copeland, Ms. Quimby, Nan McGinnis, and myself. And we're asking that we replace me with Stan Sunday and Nan McGinnis with Ella Mae Walters to serve on that. to serve on that negotiation team.
Second.
And before you vote, let me give you two. We, we are at the table officially, so a couple of, a couple of warnings. Do not discuss salary benefits or working conditions with any firefighter or anybody covered in the collective bargaining agreement. If you do, that's considered negotiations away from the table, and that's considered bad faith negotiation. So if, if a firefighter tries to, be kind and be, uh, be, but be direct and say you simply cannot have any contact with them. And once, once the negotiations start, there will be a possibility of an executive session to discuss terms of the contract, and Mr. Copeland would be here to explain where we are in those negotiations.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is regarding the BP settlement funds, and that would be the county, uh, portion of those funds. As you're well aware, we settled recently with BP. And I think the final amount to the county was 3.2 million, um, of those funds. We're simply asking today if, uh, there's any consideration of where you'd like those funds to be allocated. We're not bringing a recommendation, not particularly asking for, um, any action today, but if you have direction for the board. Just to remind you, those, these funds were generated from, um, calculations utilizing three, uh, revenue streams. That was sales tax, the one cent surcharge tax, and the local option gas tax. And then there were some multipliers applied to that, uh, for 2010. So this was revenue that would have been general fund revenue had we received it at the time. So somewhat at your discretion as to what we'd use those funds for. If you're, uh, wish to have any discussion about that and give staff any direction, otherwise we'll wait till we hear from you.
Uh, one comment. Part of the fund there was the local option gas tax, which would mean that the, uh, Public Works Fund would have to be considered as part of the recipients for this, too. I think because it's a one-time funding source for whatever we decide to do with it, we, we don't want to use it as an operational type fund, that it's a recurring cost. But I know that we have postponed a number of infrastructure needs, and whether it's buildings or whether it's vehicles or equipment or whatnot. The, the budgets over the past, uh, five years have been very, very, uh, lean. I know that at one point in time, the county had a budget of about 137 million dollars, and it's been cut down to about 100 million dollars. So a lot of those things that were being taken care of on an annual basis kept getting postponed and deferred. I know that, uh, the sheriff has, has deferred some costs. I know the Public Works has deferred some costs. I know that Emergency Services have deferred some costs. So I'd like to see that, that those costs that would benefit the public the most be addressed and within the framework of those three entities to look to see what we could do to best serve them on a capital basis and not an operational basis. That, that's my opinion.
Commissioner Maddox.
Yeah, I'd like to, I would like to see these funds put in a reserve account, different account called BP Settlement Funds, and that we allocate them during the 2014-15 budget hearings. In other words, we look at everything that, that is needed. There are a lot of needs. And that we, um, make the decision based on, um, you know, more information. And that we possibly try to leverage that account, um, not just spend it on things, but leverage it, perhaps spend, uh, the interest on that account, um, something like that. Use it kind of as a, um, you know, seed account. But that's my recommendation, because I think there, like you said, there's so many needs that we need to, we probably just need to look at all the needs and what's, what's, um, what's lacking and what we've been doing over the past years. And then make some well-educated decisions rather than just kind of say, you know, let's do this, this, and this today.
I tend to agree with both, both of my fellow Commissioners. I don't think we should be in a great hurry to spend this money. It's not going to burn a hole in our pocket. Let's take the time to assess our needs. I also agree with Mr. Infeld, um, you know, no reoccurring, whereas the, the next years and the next years, we're going to have to, you know, but certainly let's take the time to wisely decide, um, what's the, the best way to, to spend these funds.
Well, let me throw this out for consideration. I'm going to speak specifically to the sheriff's office, having done my time up there. But there is a threshold of when you can order patrol cars, okay? And it is shortly coming up, it's sometime in April. Am I correct there, Sheriff? I believe you're right. And if you do not place your order by that time, you cannot order equipment. So you have to see if you can reach out there and find somebody that may have them on their lot. You could be buying from multiple locations, and they're not all going to be specked out accordingly. So maybe we, uh, we could consider, as far as the sheriff, if we could have an idea about how much we might be able to give to him or would want to give to him for the purchase of this equipment, to allow him at least the opportunity with the, the knowledge that he would, it would be paid for at a, whenever they come in, that, uh, he'll be allowed to go based upon that, say, okay, I can, if you say a million dollars or whatever it may be, then he can order the equipment and not have to worry about whether he can find it at some place throughout the states.
Yeah, I, I would tend to agree with that, but, um, I couldn't get a copy of what they spent last year, itemized. So I have no idea, you know, what they've spent on what and how much they need. So, um, without that data, it's very difficult for me to just say, well, let's give the sheriff, you know, a million dollars for vehicles, because, um, you know, obviously he's had a budget for the last six years or whatever. And he should have been replacing these vehicles as you go along.
Well, I can speak to about three and a half years of that up there. We asked for and put in under capital additional vehicles. And who's, they, to work with the county due to the lack of revenue, we did not purchase them.
Yeah. Well, and, and I, and I think that's the case with a lot of different departments. I mean, I think that, you know, no county employees have had, I think, an increase in how many years, cost of living. You know, so, I mean, there's, there's a lot of needs.
There's a lot of needs and very little funding. And if we were to, as we move forward during the, the coming months with our budget workshops and budget requests that's going to come in. If this money is not used to provide additional, uh, resources for them to purchase vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances, and equipment for public works, which we've got a lot. As I mentioned last time, I got one that stays in the shop more than it stays out on the road. So we've got to look at trying to do that. And if we don't try to use some of it to do that now, then when we get to our budget on the place, if we're going to start replacing, putting these things back on a cycle of replacement, then you know where that means. It's a possibility the budget may go up.
Right, but I-
Are you talking about spending the money now?
Well, I am saying right now, what I am recommending is basically is there may be other needs when the sheriff, aside from the sheriff, either in fire rescue or public works, that they say, well, we, we could use this or we need to do this now, is at least give the sheriff an idea that say, okay, Sheriff, you can, uh, we're looking at a million dollars. I'm using that arbitrarily, a million dollars now to, uh, so he can move forward and place the order before he misses that window opportunity to place in the order to get them here, specked out as he needs them.
Do they have to, do they have to give a deposit on the?
No, you don't have to give a deposit. You just basically have to give a requisition of a purchase order.
So what if they, could they do that and then back out of it if they don't get the money?
Yeah, they could. Yes, they could.
Yeah, so just, well, um-
I, I, I wouldn't, I don't think that'd be a prudent thing to do, to order a million dollars worth of cars, and then you don't get the money, and next thing you know, you tell them, hey, do whatever you got to do with them. A million dollars worth of cars, a lot of cars. And they, they might get a little ill at us.
I'm just saying that, that we, you know, I don't have enough information at the time. And I couldn't get a copy of their budget last year, what they spent. They wouldn't give me a copy of it. So I, I really want to see, you know, what, how the money's being spent before I allocate X number of dollars of the taxpayer money to a, to a department that, uh, won't even, uh, give me what they've spent and what they, what they've budgeted, so.
Sheriff, you have any comments?
At, at some point last year, Commissioner, I, the sheriff did provide some information. I'm not sure exactly what it was, but if, let's get together and we'll get with sheriff, and we'll, we'll get what, what we need to get to that decision.
Yeah, I, I asked for what was budgeted in 2013 and what was actually spent and what categories in 2013.
Okay.
So, I mean, that, it was basic, it was, it was basic. But I, I never did receive that, so that's, that would be my-
Sheriff, come forward, please.
I want to make sure you have that. Just to clarify, we, we produce a line out on justified budget. I know we sent that in, we spoke at some point. So if there was a breakdown in getting that to you, that may be his or ours. But we provide that every year, and we also make that available to, uh, the Taxpayers Association or the Institute of Senior Professionals, really anybody that wants to see that, so that is available.
Could I ask a question, Sheriff? When is the drop dead date for you in April?
I'm not sure the exact date, but he's right. It takes about five or six months to get everything in, get it lined up, get the vehicles in. We're, and we understand there's needs everywhere, public works. Uh, I know the ambulance situation is pretty serious as well. We've got 65 vehicles that today on the ground have in excess of 130,000 miles on them. So you can figure by December, the time it would take us probably October or something like that to get them outfitted out, we're talking about 150,000, 160,000 miles. I mean, I know the board had always traditionally done a very good job of trying to be on a rotation. I know that's something we all agree would be to the betterment of the, uh, county as a whole for all our equipment over the long term. Finances being what they are, we have to do what we're capable of doing, so.
What does one vehicle cost?
Yeah, that's interesting, because what happens is we buy those on a sheriff's contract or a state contract. And it can be somewhat misleading, because we buy a Caprice, your normal car that you see on the road, it's about 29,000 without any piece of equipment in it. What I say is misleading about that is we can actually buy a Chevrolet Tahoe for $3,000 less per unit. However, you know, publicly, if we start rolling around in Tahos, people believe that that is, they're paying $45,000 for them. So we tend to try and stay with the, uh, Caprices or a, a Ford SUV, which is about 27,000. So 29 to 27,000. Now, that's not cages or stripes and lights.
Yeah, what does it cost to outfit the vehicle?
Pretty close to $40,000.
To, in addition to the-
If we outfit, yeah, if we outfit everything. But we won't fully, I mean, to be honest with you, the, the car situation is so serious, we're not going to fully outfit the cars. I mean, I think the public, the public wants to have cameras in the cars, and they want to have radars in the cars. But we just simply can't afford to do that. I mean, quite honestly, we're, we're going to have to go what the bare minimum is. And, you know, Commissioner Infeld and I had discussed this the other day, too, about getting, uh, using different vehicles based on what the need are. Not everyone needs the Caprice or the SUV. You know, we've tried Nissan Altima's. We've run some testing evaluations on other types of vehicles. And that's something we'll continue to do as well, too, try and be as efficient as we can with it.
Do you ever look at fuel, um, you know, economy, um, what, what's the fuel situation?
Well, we've actually looked at a couple of different things. There had been some discussion about compressed natural gas and propane. The initial problem for us was a conversion issue. That is something we may entertain in the future. We've talked about trying that at the local level, the city of Dufunac has some gas here. You know, we, we just had to logistically make that work. The conversion's about $7,000 per unit, which is a problem for us. But as far as normal gas mileage, yes, ma'am, that's the reason we have looked at the Nissan Altima. Some of our school resource deputies, we've tried those, some of our investigators. We try and do several different vehicles. And we do, you know, we discussed these vehicles one time before. They're not always in the best shape, but where they are, we try and use those as well.
I think I heard on the news this morning about the city is really going forward with their natural gas conversion, you know, and can sell it. Do you feel like that, that eventually will be a savings to everybody?
I think if I could order it from the factory, I think I could order it from the factory, possibly. I mean, there's some studies being done. We've looked at it one time before. The, the problem is that the gas tank takes up the entire rear of the patrol vehicle, which basically renders it useless at that point from our standpoint. So, you know, in other words, you've got your gas, and then you lose neither your trunk or the rear of the patrol vehicle, and that's a little bit of a problem. But I think over the long, I think if we could order them, I think there is some, there's some discussion points from that.
Could you maybe have to us by the next meeting, how many vehicles that you, you feel like that you need, that you're going to need, uh, bare minimum, and that cost? And also the date that you, drop dead date for you to place the order?
I actually sent that, I, I actually sent that to you about a month ago, just so you, a couple of different options in there. And, and here's the reality of it, Commissioner. If you give me five vehicles, I'm better off than I am tomorrow. I mean, that, that's the reality of it. We, we just have to do something.
I didn't, we didn't, we didn't get that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Then it's to Larry, yeah.
We'll get it to you, yeah.
So, so anyway, I guess the short answer to that is, is this, whatever you do is an improvement over what I'm dealing with right now. We're at, just so you understand, we're at, we're at a situation, we do not, we're not even maintaining spares now. All our spares are back on the road, we're repainting them. And so you're getting, you're going to end up having 100-plus vehicles with excess of 100,000 miles. And the maintenance shop has done a great job. We pushed rotation up to 150,000 miles. That's pretty phenomenal, really, so a pretty good job of that. So whatever you do is an improvement. I just don't want to have to be down at the end, as, as Commissioner Chapman said, or as the chairman said, that, you know, we're in a situation where we can't do this. But I am cognizant of your other needs as well, too, so, thank you.
Well, I think, uh, I'd like to make one more point and quit kicking this dead horse. But, uh, the one thing is that emergency vehicles, no matter what the mileage is, you multiply that by 2.5. And that's, gives you a better indication of how much miles is on that. So if you've got 150, you're looking at 400.
And, and there's quite a few really vetted, well-done studies nationwide telling you what these vehicles are costing. The maintenance costs are pretty significant, as you can well imagine. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Were you implying they abused their cars to make the mileage like that?
Uh, no, they sat there and idled. Okay.
Blame it on the little guy.
I was just going to suggest that we'll bring, we've got the information from the sheriff. We'll confirm that what we have is still where we are, and we'll get that to you. And then, uh, it'd probably allow you to deal with that separately. And then we'll, uh, come and visit with each of you over the next, uh, couple of weeks and look at what needs and emergency management, uh, public works in those areas are, and any you may have. And then we'll, we'll work on a, a plan.
Yeah, and could I get a copy of, and Stan was at all those meetings, and he saw, he saw different copies that we had. A copy of the 2013-14 budget, um, line item, what was budgeted and what was spent, you know, that year on that particular line item. Thanks.
Sure. So, um, so we'll, um, have you the information on the sheriff's office, uh, in short order and perhaps deal with that at the next board meeting. But I wouldn't anticipate we'd be moving anything else forward.
A side item question for the, for the clerk. Mr. Alford, do we have the CAFRA for 2013 yet?
The CAFRA is finished and it's gone to the publishers.
Okay, will we be getting them by the end of the month, do you think?
I hope so.
You mean April, March?
You know, also too-
By the end of March.
By the end of March, ooh, good.
Also, too, is that what you're talking about, the, the estimated tax revenue?
No, what it does is it shows you what the budget was, and it tells you what the expenditures were. I don't know that it's as much detail as you may be looking for, but it gives you a, a breakdown by category of this is what the budget was and this is how it was spent.
Also, too, it'd be interesting to know, I know the economy's picked up, the, um, buildings picked up. We're going to be getting some more tax revenues, I believe, this year. It would be interesting to know what that number is, so that we could look at everything laid out and say, okay, we've got the money to do this, this, and this. When, when does that happen?
Wanda, did you tell me that you thought maybe, uh, sometime next month, we would have an indication?
Uh, we can ask for one from the property appraiser. We don't want to give you official ones like June 1st.
Right. Yeah, but I, I think they can give us kind of a preliminary look at, at what it's looking like.
And sales tax numbers, estimates, that, that would be, um, that would be good to, to hear, too.
We'll work on that.
Okay.
All right, I think we understand the direction on that. Next item, Mr. Chairman, is to, we're requesting to approve a work task order for the EOC. Did I forget another one?
You jumped the pumping.
Yeah, this was the one we added. This was, this was the agenda item we added earlier, the, um-
It's in this little, it's in here, Sarah, it's in your, uh, it's on your-
My next one was pumping, but maybe I-
That's what I had, too.
On page one of eight on your little screen here.
My next one was pumping.
Want to do pumping first?
Yeah. Pumping first.
Pumping.
We've, we've provided you with a draft policy for pumping during flood events. If you recall back last summer, it was, it was a pretty hot topic. We're asking you just to review that and provide comments to staff, and we'll, uh, provide, um, if you can do that by the first part of next week, we'll get it next week's, next board agenda and ask for some action. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, it, it was written kind of, um, well, it was written, um, I, I kept reading it, thinking that, you know, we were not going to pump on private property, but the way that it read said that, um-
If that's the policy we want to adopt, that in no instance would we pump on private property, we certainly can. We were looking for a mechanism that in extenuating circumstances would let the board make some determination that it would be in the public's best interest, but if-
I thought it was, well, I, I thought it was confusing. It was confusing to me- I thought it was, well, I thought it was confusing. It was confusing to me. Was it confusing to you?
It is confusing, yeah. You know, one of the problems was, and I don't remember, Commissioner, whether you went there last year, but remember we had all the floods?
Yeah.
And Wilmer can probably remind me where we went. We went and sat in South Walton. There was a road that goes and dips and comes back up. That entire road, the houses around it, I mean, they were up to their porches and water.
Dolphin.
Um, yes, dolphin white.
Dolphin.
Yeah.
Private road.
How do we address that kind of thing? And, you know, where's the water coming from?
That particular one, that particular one, I got public works to look at the drainage basin, and we've, we've realized that the pumping, somebody else north of them was pumping into the pond and it was overflowing into them. So you had a lot of private people out there pumping off their site.
Off their property.
And it was going on other properties. So we, I think this will, it will be better. I don't know that it will resolve because they did build that road in a floodway.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I'm, I, I would like it to just say, you know, we don't pump on private property except in these instances.
Yeah, that would be easier to read and understand.
Yeah, it was just, it was-
I know, you know, I know legislative day and it's going to be a real short week. So sometime in the next couple of weeks, staff will get with each of you and try to bring back a better product.
I know what they were trying to do, but it just seems like-
Yeah.
They went around the horn to get to it, you know?
Yeah, I think that's-
Did it allow your draft this?
Yes, sure.
That's, answers my question. Yeah.
Okay.
Task order. Now, we added to the agenda the task order for the EOC. If you recall, President Rich had been moving this project forward, and we agreed to, you agreed at the last meeting to allow us to engage them. So this, we're just asking your approving the task order, which would move, allow us to move this project along. I think the total cost was about eighteen thousand, eighteen thousand three hundred dollars for their portion, which would allow us to move forward. There is some language here about approving the design. Can you pull that up for us? We just want to make sure, this is the design as it's presented. And if you'll notice in the, in the large room where the, the meat of the operations occur during an event, what you see there, please just use as representative. There's probably a better way to configure that area. So we don't want any approval today to be construed as that's the way that area's going to look when it's done. We want to look at the best way to optimize that area and utilize the space for the folks that have to be there when we're activated. So with that understanding, we'd ask your approval.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Last item is regarding civil citations at our February twenty-fifth meeting. They're restricting it to Planning Director Wayne Dyson, Code Enforcement, to bring back civil citation fee recommendations in a resolution. So where are today with those recommendations? Wayne is here if you have any questions. They did some research to determine, you know, what others may look alike and made some recommendations based on that. He's got them all.
I would like to make one comment. It's good to see Mr. Offord looking so well.
Yeah. Glad you're doing better.
Yeah, Mr. Offord.
Looking well.
Okay.
Well, as well as, as well as he can look.
Jason, you speaking?
Yeah, Jason Calano of Code Enforcement. Good morning. If you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Jason, my understanding is if there is a code violation, by statute, we have to give the first interaction as a warning.
Yes, we have to give a written warning to the violator.
And that if they go through each one of these different counts, it'd be like the third, it's, the maximum is five hundred dollars by statute.
Statute sets a maximum of five hundred dollars per citation that we can write. The, once the first warning is written, that warning is good for each subsequent offense. So once the first warning is given, if they violate that same section again, we can write the first offense and then so on from there. Second offense, third offense.
Okay.
I've got a question on your chart. Under both the junk debris and under the signs, there's a dollar figure, two hundred and fifty dollars for junk debris. On the signs that says two hundred dollars, but then when you look under flagler, the flagler's got a first, second, third offense that's different. What are the two fifty and the two hundred? What do they represent?
Yeah, each county address, very difficult to compare because each county put emphasis on different types of violations. That was for Okaloosa County. They did not use a first offense, second offense structure. It was a one-time violation, and that was a two hundred and fifty dollar violation for their junk and debris.
That's Okaloosa's thing.
That was Okaloosa, yes, sir. And the sign for permit, they only had a violation for signed permits. If you did not have a signed permit, it was a two hundred dollar fine.
Any other questions?
Well, what happens in Okaloosa County if they keep on offending, you know? Is it another two hundred dollars and another?
Yeah, possibly so. I'm not very familiar. They didn't go into great detail.
That's not clear. Okay, thank you.
You've also made reference in here about Santa Rosa Brevard and St. Lucy, but St. Lucy says, uses them for serious cases.
What is that?
Is, is what-
Yeah, I spoke to, I spoke to them. Each county I called and spoke to their Code Enforcement Department. And what she explained to me was they don't try to use their citation for their everyday mundane violations. It was when they had a case that they had hit a road block where they would not come into compliance, that's when they utilize their, their citation. So it's going to be a little bit different than what we were intending on using ours for, was primarily for sign violations that we run across, the same offenders every day. We're picking up their signs throughout the county every week. That's where we were going to hope, hope that the citation would be a little bit more of an immediate consequence to them rather than taking them in front of the code board, which can be a very lengthy process.
I noticed on here that we really have no, no civil citations for illegal clearing of wetlands, illegal clearing of preservation areas, you know, dumping into the bay and things like that. What, can y'all?
Yeah, the way we currently use those types of violations, we bring in front of the code board because it can be a, it's a reoccurring fine until they correct it. Where we, we're limited to, it's a, the most we can write is up to five hundred dollars. And so that's just how we utilize it. I don't know if you want to speak to that at all.
Yeah, and that's right. And when they go in front of the Code Enforcement Board, they can, it'd be per violation per day. So they can go up to two hundred and fifty dollars a day per violation. So we can hit them with a heavier fine when they go in front for clearing and stuff until they restore it back or correct the violations.
Okay.
I still have, I guess, a concern with the word junk. Is that a standard word throughout all of, every county, the word junk? Because, you know, I might consider it a treasure.
It's, yeah, it's, the term junk is in our land development code, and it was, those were the only four, litter, fence violations, junk and debris, and signs were the only four common violations between Walton County and one or more other county that I looked at. But they all had a junk and debris.
Okay.
Yeah.
Everything in my yard is treasure. I've stepped.
But let me also ask you, on the very last page of your proposal is the one that says Walton County litter and nuisance control. And you've got one hundred, two hundred, three hundred. But back when we've got on the front page with your chart, you've got one hundred, one fifty, and two hundred.
That's what our current, that was in the current resolution, the value.
So this is just the current one?
That's the current.
As opposed to what we're proposing? Okay.
Exactly. And we don't, we don't, most of our litter cases, we kind of handle as junk and debris. We don't use the litter ordinance very often. But that was just a common violation between us and the other counties. That's why I put that in there.
Any other questions? What's the board's wishes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion and a second. Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all, Mr. Chairman. Ed, Ed, me in.
Mr. Bagby. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we have one item. This item actually goes back to January of two thousand thirteen, when you asked us to go back to the TDC Advisory Council and see if they were amenable in funding the replacement of the signs on the Tempucci Trail. They were. Then we came back in June and got you to de-obligate some funds and move some funds, but we never finished the transaction. So we're asking that you allow us to do that and repair those or replace those signs.
And Commissioners, this item is essentially to award the bid to this particular-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And the only updates we have as of this morning, we had five hundred and sixty-five responses to our strategic planning survey questionnaire. I want to thank y'all all that made time to talk to Mr. Gold and remind you that April first at eight o'clock is when he will be presenting the results of the survey and helping facilitate our strategic planning for the coming year. And the survey will be open till Thursday night this week. So if you haven't had a chance, please go on and take the survey.
Parking needs assessment.
Parking needs assessment. The meeting is going to be April the twenty-third, I believe at five thirty P.M. at La Seal in San Destin. We coordinated that because we anticipate having two to three hundred folks. Parking, obviously, is a huge thing in this county, and we believe we will have a large crowd. We will advertise it, promote it. AFCON will make their presentation. I believe they've talked to each of you individually, and they go back with your comments and do the final, and then that's when they will present it to the public. So I think everybody, I know everybody, particularly in the south end of the county, is very sensitive to the parking study presentation. So we wanted to get a big enough place to handle everybody.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Bagby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is a request to approve a contract with Creative Mailbox Designs LLC for the bid you just awarded, and asking you to approve the contract and authorizing the chairman to sign the contract. Before you make a motion, we are working fairly diligently on a policy on contract approvals and how we are going to do that. This is one of the many ways we are, we are trying to do, to do contract approvals, and that is essentially if we have a bid, hard bid type of thing, the day you award the bid, we will have ready a separate item on the agenda to go ahead and have you approve the contract for that bid. We are finding that may or may not be possible on requests for proposals always because sometimes when you have the meeting, you ask for things in the contract that may be different than had been talked about in the bid conference. So unless, we'll have it ready, but there may be times when we have to put that particular contract off for a week. But we're, we're working on a policy. We've been experimenting with various ways to, for lack of a better term, tighten that process up where it's predictable, understandable. And when I'm gone, the next guy will be able to look at it, look at the policy and say, okay, this is how we do that. So this first item is, is the approval of the contract for the bid you just awarded.
So moved.
Second.
But can I, is this the, this is the wayfinding sign?
Yes, ma'am. Creative Mailboxes Designs Wayfind.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And a motion and a second. Hall in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Thank you, Commissioners. The second item is the contract with Beesie Allen Crowe, Melvin Portis, and Miles and the Atkison Law Firm on the Walton County BP claim. And just to give you a little history, this contract was presented to the board as part of a response to the request for proposals for BP firms back in April of two thousand and eleven. The board in April fifteenth of two thousand and eleven voted to award the bid to Beesie Allen and to the Atkison Law Firm. This particular contract was actually part, it was obviously blank, but it was actually part of the response to the request for bids that was before the board back on April fifteenth, two thousand and eleven. It's arguable that that, that the awarding the bid with the contract in the package was approving the contract. But all I'm seeking today is to clarify that that's indeed what happened, that when you awarded the bid on April fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, that your, this contract would have been a part of that award and you would, you would approve or ratify essentially the contract that was taken. I'll also say that one of the issues, obviously, is if we've had a sunshine law violation, and it's arguable that we have not, frankly, by doing this, essentially retroactively, we, we have the possibility and the argument to make to a court at some point that by doing this, we've cut off the, our liability for attorney fees to the other side. So that's, that's the largest reason I'm asking you to go backwards. I rarely do that, but this is essentially a cleanup, and it would allow us to make that argument to a court at some point. So I would ask you to ratify the agreement as presented.
Well, since, since I wasn't on the board, I'm going to abstain from voting on the next three items, any kind of ratification of any kind of contract, because I don't feel like I can, I'm not going to ratify a contract that, that I didn't, wasn't involved in, didn't vote, so.
And Commissioner, you know, and I'm not, I'm not telling you anything you don't know, obviously, but under Florida law, you can abstain when you have an announced conflict. And either that or you have to vote yes or no. Those are the three options that are available.
I have an announced conflict. I have an ethical, an ethical conflict with, with ratifying something that, that I didn't have anything to do with, that there are inherent legal issues with.
Absolutely understand.
Mr. Chairman, we need to move forward. I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
And a motion and a second. Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioners, the next contract or the next item is a request to, again, ratify agreements between Walton County, the TDC, and Atkison Law Firm. Let me walk you through this. This is a little, little more convoluted. Back in January, I believe it was January twenty-sixth of two thousand and ten, the Board of County Commissioners, when you hired, when the board hired Lynn Hashihara as the interim county attorney after the resignation of Burke and Blue, you, you authorized Ms. Hashihara to, and I'm quoting minutes, and I have not listened to the tape, frankly, to work with the board to secure legal counsel as needed, to stay on schedule with current legal issues, and to utilize local attorneys as outside counsel. Pursuant to that authority, on, I hope I get these dates right, on December fourteenth, two thousand and eleven, no, I'm going to get these dates wrong. Yeah, two thousand and fourteen, I'm sorry, let me go back. On November first, two thousand and ten, Ms. Hashihara entered into a contract with the Atkison Law Firm for the firm provide what was stated as general representation to Walton, Walton County. On January third, a second contract was entered into with, with the Atkison Law Firm to provide services as special counsel for the county. And then on, and then on January first, actually signed on January third, another contract was entered into to provide land use and planning type advice. When Ms. Hashihara resigned, she came back, let me say this, two of those contracts, the one signed on January first, two thousand and eleven, excuse me, the one signed on July thirteenth, two thousand and eleven, have actually expired by their own terms that they've ended. There was a period of time that they were effective for. When she resigned, she came back to the board and appeared, I believe it was on twelve fourteen, two thousand and eleven, I may have that day wrong, and asked the, asked the commission to change that contract between Mr. Atkison's Law Firm, Atkison Law Firm, and the county from Lynn Hashihara as the county attorney for and on behalf of Walton County to Walton County and the Atkison Law Firm. That contract was before the board on that date. The board approved it. And so that's the contract that the Atkison Law Firm is operating under today and is being paid twenty-five hundred dollars a month. I don't believe that one needs to be approved. It was approved especially on twelve fourteen, two thousand and eleven, or specifically on that date. The only thing I think you would need, so in, in terms of what they're being paid for today, which is their representation of the TDC as your general counsel, that contract was actually approved on twelve four, at the county commission meeting when Ms. Hashihara resigned. It was part of the packet that the board considered. So essentially, I'm giving you this as information. I don't believe there's any reason- believe there's any reason, since that's the only contract they're being paid for, that's the only contract that they're operating under today. I don't believe there's any reason to go back at this point and ratify anything.
This is what had been done.
Essentially, I'm just telling you that that's there for your information. Now, they were paid under the previous contracts, but I think it's, again, arguable that Ms. Hashihara was given the authority. The payments appeared on the, I haven't confirmed this exactly, but I believe they appeared on the EALs when the contracts, those other contracts were in place. So that's where we are in terms of general representation before the TDC by Mr. Atkinson's Law Firm in terms of contracts. So everybody, was that clear, did I make that clear? Okay. So the next item then would be number three, which, excuse me, number four, which would be a request to ratify the contract with Nix Patterson Roach. Let me give you the history on that briefly. On January eleventh, two thousand and eleven, the Walton County Board of County Commissioners, at its regular meeting, granted to the former executive director of Walton County Tours Development Council permission to contract with a firm to represent the TDC in its claim against BP. Ms. Malaturno then, on January fourteenth, it appears, I'll make sure that dates. January fourteenth of two thousand and eleven, entered into a contract with Nix Patterson. I'm gonna hand that out. The contract that I attached, that we had in our office, had the wrong signature page. I think I emailed you the newest one, or the one, the copy of the actual original that I have received from Drake Martin. It was signed on January fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. It is the contract that Drake Martin and his firm operated under during the negotiations with BP. The contract, as we have discussed, called for the commission to receive, or the TDC to receive eighty percent of any recovered proceeds, and Nix Patterson to receive twenty percent. And out of that twenty percent, a number of firms was to receive a portion of that twenty percent. It was not only Atkinson Law Firm, it was also Harrison, Cell, McCloy, Duncan, and Jackson out of Panama City, William Harrison, I'm sorry, Carl Nelson on behalf of Fowler White and Boggs out of Tampa and the Atkinson Law Firm. Oh, I'm sorry, also the Harrison Revard Law Firm out of Panama City. Those firms had an agreement to receive a portion of that twenty percent. To my review of the minutes and agenda items, that contract itself was never specifically approved by the commission. There was, however, a preliminary payment made in April of two thousand and eleven, under preliminary payment to the TDC for their lost revenue claims. The commission had a special meeting on April fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, and adopted a resolution, I think it was two eleven dash thirty-three, which amended the budget to account for the unanticipated revenue that was received with the preliminary claim. We also authorized and executed a partial settlement agreement at that time with BP. In those minutes, and again, I did not listen to this tape yet, but in those minutes, the executive director of the TDC stated that all the members were unanimously, I think she used the term unanimously in agreement to the settlement, and then briefly discussed the details of the settlement. By the way, at that, that was a special meeting of the Walton County Board of County Commissioners. That's the same meeting that the Beasley Allen Firm was selected. You reviewed the request for proposals, and that was the same meeting that Beasley Allen was selected. I'm asking you to ratify that agreement, and the reason I'm asking you to do that, again, is if there's a lawsuit, it gives me the argument that by ratifying it, we are not responsible for attorney fees for the party that could sue us. I may lose that argument, but I can certainly give me a chance to make that argument.
Well, that particular document you're talking about, I see is attested to by the clerk.
Yes, ma'am.
And the county attorney and the chairman at that time, and then all the, so.
And I will tell you, that version or that copy was not in our office. Mr. Martin, who emailed it to me, I had not looked at the attachment on the email, because I thought I had the same one he had, but this is the one I handed you that has those attestations or is a copy of the original that he has. He has the original agreement, obviously, because it's his firm that's getting paid. By the way, those funds, when we were paid, the firm gets the full amount, and then we approve a disbursement sheet. Chairman signs the disbursement sheet, and we get eighty percent, and then he keeps the twenty percent and makes disbursement to the firms that are listed in the contract. Same thing happened with the Beasley Allen contract and the settlement with BP on the Walton County side. They get the money. We get the check after the dispersment's made to the other firms.
I guess, you know, my question is.
Oh, and after some cost as well, by the way.
Because this is attested to by the clerk, it had to come before us at some time.
I just haven't found that, Commissioner Meadows, and I have, Commander, I'm sorry, I have a, we've been putting together minutes, transcripts. I have a notebook full of those things. I feel the same way. It just seems to me that at some point, it may or may not, it may have happened. I just haven't found it yet. And I will tell you, Mr. Alford's office is not paying a dime unless we have a signed contract these days, or some proof of board action. And that is, that will prevent this from happening again, I will tell you. That will absolutely prevent this from happening again.
It just looks like to me that they've got to be there somewhere. Martha Engel wouldn't have put her name to something that we hadn't approved.
Mr. Osborne.
Oh, she's attesting to it as a signature.
Yeah, she's not attesting to the board's action. She's only attesting to the signature, yeah. She watched him sign it, essentially.
She watched him sign it.
Right.
For the record, Alan Osborne, I'd like to echo Mr. Riley's comments from earlier. I think before you ratify this, you need to take a hard look at some ethical issues and whether you decide to do this. As you just said earlier, the Atkinson Law Firm was being paid twenty-five hundred dollars a month. I'm gonna read from the statute one twelve point three one three, or three one two definitions. Conflict. Conflict of interest means a situation with regard for a private interest tends to lead to the disregard of a public duty or interest. Corruptly means done with a wrongful intent and for the purpose of attaining or compensating or receiving compensation for any benefit resulting from some act or omission of a public servant which is inconsistent with the proper performance of his or her duties. Standards of conduct for government attorneys. For the purpose of ethics, a local government attorney means any individual who routinely serves as an attorney for local, a unit of local government. Clearly, as you just said by the contracts that you have ratified and the ones that were done, the Atkinson Law Firm acted as a government attorney for the TDC and also for the BCC. I find it highly in conflict that the chairman of the TDC at the time also used the Atkinson Law Firm for private representation, yet entered into a contract with them. And it says, a local government attorney under sixteen, the standards of conduct provided in subsection two, four, five, six, and eight shall apply to any person who serves as a local government attorney. A local government attorney whose contract with a unit of local government does not include provisions that authorize or mandate the use of the law firm or the local government attorney to complete legal services for the unit of local government shall not recommend or otherwise refer legal work to that attorney's firm to be completed for the unit of local government. Now, clearly, what I don't understand is this. If the Atkinson Law Firm was being paid to represent the TDC, twenty-five hundred dollars a month, I understand. Obviously, they were competent enough to file a BP claim, because they did so under another contract. Why didn't they file it when they were already being paid for it? Clearly, they had the expertise because a contract was entered into by the director of the TDC. I find that contract to be in conflict with the best interest of the county, that they knew, or should have known, either Mr. Atkinson or the firm, should have known that the firm that they were either recommending or allowing to recommend was gonna end up paying them. And it says clearly in there, shall not recommend or otherwise refer legal work to that attorney's law firm to be completed for that unit of local government. That contract that you're about to ratify is completing work for the TDC. They're already being paid as the TDC attorney. I encourage you to get a formal written opinion from the Ethics Commission over whether this is a conflict or not. You can't decide. I can't decide. I can only tell you what's in the statute. But the Ethics Commission ought to have to look on this before we pay out this money to somebody who was obviously qualified to go ahead and file the claim and had been paid to give representation to the TDC, not on a specific issue, but to the TDC in general, just like the county. So I think that to act otherwise would be inconsistent with good government. And I'd ask you to do that.
Thank you. Two things in response. One, I have requested an Ethics Commission on that very, Ethics Commission opinion on that exact very issue. Sent it out a week and a half ago. Obviously, have not had a response. Secondly, again, the county has not paid anything. That money, and I know that's to some folks is a distinction without a difference, but the money was never received by Walton County. It was received by Nix Patterson Roach, who paid the firms that were listed in their contract, in the contract.
But wouldn't that be a civil matter?
I think it's an Ethics Commission matter. Yes, ma'am.
But if we deny the payment, then we're denying paying Nix Patterson Roach.
Yeah, that payment was made, and the money was received by Nix Patterson Roach. They sent us our eighty percent. Yes, ma'am. And I will tell you, we've amended the budget for the Walton County payment. We have not amended the budget yet for the TDC payment.
No, we've already amended our budget.
Ms. Harris.
And by the way, I have not made an Attorney General's request yet. I've just only made an Ethics Commission request.
Are you gonna, are you going to make it?
I'm trying to decide if that's a, I said I would, but frankly, I'm trying to decide if that's a subject the Attorney General will even give an opinion on, so.
I know all of you have read all of your own executive session minutes, haven't you? If you haven't, you should. At the first, when, at the last executive session where y'all vote to take the money, each person that's in the executive session is told who they are and who they represent. It is very clear that Clay and Clayton's law firm represent Beasley Allen, and that they are local counsel for the TDC. It clearly says, Brantley Fry Jones of Beasley Allen, S. Drake Martin of Beasley Allen, these are the people in attendance and who they represent, Billy Basset of Nix Patterson and Roach, Clayton Atkinson and Clay B. Atkinson, local counsel for Beasley Allen, and board counsel for the TDC are attending this meeting. Nowhere in there does it say that Clayton and Clay Atkinson's law firm is representing the TDC with Roach, Nix Patterson. Then if you go to page thirty-six, Ms. Commander, when they are talking about that maybe you shouldn't accept the offer, but you should go to court, Ms. Commander says, I want to hear from our attorney, the guy asleep over there in the corner, the guy asleep in the corner. Hopefully, that was a joke. On page thirty-seven, it says, Mr. Davis, your attorney, says, I'm very concerned about the possibility of the counter offer being made, and BP just simply withdrawing the offer and going to trial. On page thirty-eight, it says, we contracted with Atkinson Law Firm to provide counsel to the BCC. Larry Jones says, we contracted with Beasley Allen, who contracted with. Then if you go on to page forty-three, Mr. Atkinson, Clayton, is arguing, why should we take an offer of four point five when your offer to them was thirty? Commissioner Commander. And I think there's one more thing to be considered here. If we reject this offer, then the TDC offer goes away off the table. And I think everybody in this room, Clayton, I've listened to everything you're saying. I don't gamble. Clayton Atkinson says, it's not a gamble. Ms. Commander goes back and says to me, it is a gamble. Now, we're talking about an attorney who is an attorney for the TDC, being paid monthly, who is recommending something that maybe the TDC may get no money, but the BCC get thirty thousand? You can't wear both hats. Mr. Davis, I don't want them to get the wrong idea. The gamble is, we want another two million, and they take the offer completely off the table. Then there's a bunch of arguing from Clayton about how many times have you ever seen it done? Well, the day after y'all settled, they did withdraw an offer from another county. Then Mr. Davis says, the gamble is, and y'all tell me if I'm hearing this wrong, but the gamble is, every dime agrees that the TDC money is significantly more than they would get at trial. So now we have the TDC attorney arguing that we ought to go to trial, but the poor old TDC is already getting an offer of more than they'd even get at trial. Mr. Atkinson says, yes, I believe it's the max recovery. It's the max recovery. You're getting right there at the max. It's ninety-six to ninety-eight percent of what they should get. You're not going to do any better, in my opinion. Okay, so then tell me, why is he arguing to go to court? Then Mr. Davis says, I heard when we met the first time, that if we go to trial, there's a very real possibility, if not even a likelihood, that the TDC number will be zero. You have a law firm representing y'all, and you have a law firm representing the TDC. When I met with Mark Davis at, after the planning board meeting, and Don Riley was with me, Mark Davis told me at that meeting, and which we made very explicit notes of and sent right on to Matt Gaetz the next day, that even Roach Patterson was considering filing a bar complaint against Atkinson Law Firm. You cannot have somebody represent the TDC, be an attorney for the TDC, and try to encourage y'all to take, to go to court for thirty million and forget the TDC, and the TDC gets nothing. The TDC is the one who really lost in the oil spill.
Thank you.
Let me start off by saying that I'm gonna respond to what she says, but I want you to understand this lady has a personal vendetta against us.
So do you keep his name for the record?
State your name, Clayton.
Clayton, say your name.
Say your name.
I'm sorry, Clayton Atkinson, representing Atkinson Law Firm. And part of this vendetta goes back to two years ago, when she filed suit against this county and against Scott Brandon, and she lost every issue there, and in fact, she had to pay us twelve thousand five hundred dollars of attorney fees for that litigation. She also was ordered to pay the county. I suppose she has done that. But it's just continued vendetta. I'm gonna address specifically the Nix Patterson contract. Nix Patterson's contract, let me ask you this. Mr. Pritchett, you know who made the motion to authorize Don Malaturno to sign that contract? Why don't you look at the minutes? You did. You made the motion, and yet you and Mr. Jones both say in here that you had no idea we were representing TDC. That's totally contrary to the record. The packet I'm gonna give to you shows a disbursement sheet that this county was well aware in two thousand and eleven, the same time Ms. Harris was on the board at the TDC in two thousand and eleven, she was on the board with the TDC. That disbursement sheet shows that Mr. Jones signed that acknowledging that we were to receive payment. I really, I mean, I can understand if it was a mistake that we got it, that's okay. But when she asked you point blank at the last meeting, did you know they were representing you? You said no. Mr. Pritchett said no. I'm not sure of why you said no when you signed that three years ago, and Mr. Pritchett, you authorized it to be done three years ago. Look at the resolution that's there in front of you when you talk about settling this case. Now, as far as there being an ethical conflict, I don't believe there's any at all, and I think, I don't think, Mr. Davis believes there is a conflict. Mr. Davis, I'm gonna address something outside, I apologize, but you know, the school board attorney has the same contract that we have. Most of the general counsel, most of the local councils in the government agency in this panhandle probably have the same contract that we had with Nix Patterson. We're not the only local counsel that is receiving a percentage of Nix Patterson's if they get a recovery. So this contract was not unusual to this whole area. And for her to get up here today and say, you know, it was a conflict, is ludicrous, in my opinion. She talked about the comment that the fact that we discussed the settlement. You know, we did represent. You know, we did represent TDC, Ms. Meadows, and if you're in, and Ms., directly, if you look at that transcript, you will see in there, I told you at that time, you know, we represented TDC and the county. Just in the transcript, look at it, it says that, that we represent both. Now, whether or not you understood what that representation was, I don't know. I can't help that. But it does say that in that transcript. Now, we acknowledge in that, if you'll read that transcript, you'll see, we believed, and we believe today, that that payment to TDC was an outstanding settlement. It was a great settlement for TDC. Our argument was, we didn't believe the taxpayers of Walton County were getting their fair share of the BP money. They were getting less than, I think TDC winds up with what, roughly eight million? Walton County taxpayers get a little over four million? That was our argument. We believed that the county had a greater claim. We were not recommending that you not settle the TDC claim. I think you would agree with that. We were saying, but BP tied your hands, said you've gotta take all or nothing. And all our comment was, is that we believe that you're leaving money on the table for the Board of County Commissioners, not TDC. Look at the transcript, I've got that too. But you have in front of you the resolution, you have in front of you the disbursement sheets, and as far as the ratification, that disbursement sheet, I think acknowledges, as it's signed by the chairman, Mr. Jones at the time, that you authorized payment to those firms. My question to, I guess, Ms. Harris would be, why is she not complaining about the other firms that Nick Patterson, you know, shared their money with? Let me point out one other thing, I think Mr. Davis suggested, but I want to make sure the board and the public understands this. That twenty percent that Nick Patterson got, if we hadn't got a dime of it, if Atkinson Law Firm had not gotten one dime, our ten percent was not going to the TDC. That was gonna be kept by the firm, the Nick Patterson firm, which would have had, you know, that would have been their entitlement, they were right to do that. So, for her to suggest that we were taking money and deny, and from TDC, is not true. That money, they were gonna get their twenty percent, and how they divided it was up to them. And like I said, there were five other, four of the firms, nobody's complaining about those four of the firms. Again, you know, I don't, Mr. Davis asked for an opinion, that's fine. But for you to not ratify the Nick Patterson contract means that you are saying that contract is invalid. And if you look at those, what was done in two thousand and eleven, I think you did ratify that. I would think Nick Patterson and those other firms would be here arguing the same thing. Hey, wait, you know, you had a contract, so how can it be illegal or invalid as to us, and valid to the other people? Thank you.
Any questions?
I mean, it's, it is plain that in two thousand and five, six, eleven is when Dory signed off on it, and it lists all the attorney fees here, so everybody on the board at that time saw this.
It's the board's wishes.
I guess one of the questions would be, did you under- did you, did you realize that during this, this back and forth, this administrative hearing that we had, did you understand that-
You mean the executive session?
Yeah, the exec- did you understand, I think that was my, my confusion was, it wasn't specified that, you know, there was a team over here and a team over here, and this team represented the county, and this team represented the TDC. And when I met with both of them, you know, they both, I said, "Give me your argument as to why we should settle." And each of them gave me their argument as to why we should settle that particular portion. So, you know, Atkinson argued for the county, and the other guys argued for the TDC. I'm just saying, for me, it was not clear. I really thought that one was representing one, and one was representing, it wasn't clear to me that, that they were both representing the county and the TDC. And I wish they had, and he says they stated it, but, you know, the way that they were posturing, the way that they were sitting, the way that they were arguing, to me, it gave me the perception, maybe it was, maybe he did say it, the perception was that it was two different law firms arguing against each other to not let, don't let my settlement go just to get more money for yours. So I think that was, in my mind, I thought, well, these are two different teams arguing against each other. But anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Any other comments?
Mr. Davis, do you have any comments?
No, I think, I think you've heard essentially what happened and why we're here today. Again, I'm not asking you to pass on whether or not there's a conflict. All I'm asking you to do is to ratify that which is, was entered into. There's a significant argument, by the way, that because of what Ms. Commander's holding up and-
I think this ratified it, yeah.
-other actions, that this contract has been ratified. But again, by doing this, it's my opinion, that if we are sued, and that's always a possibility, this gives me a better argument to make, that the other side would not be entitled to attorney fees.
And there, I'm not a lawyer, I worked for one once, I mean, but we all saw this and voted on it, so to me, this, that would have ratified that contract. If there'd been any question, then it would have been at that time.
And I have not listened to tape of that day, I don't know what the discussion was of that date.
But would you have-
For members in two thousand, two thousand and eleven, you know.
Would you have had a, I think the thing that threw me was adamant argument by Mr. Clayton Atkinson that we should go for thirty million, and then he got angry when we, when we didn't do it, and, you know, kind of, so I figured that he was arguing for the county, and the other guys were arguing for the TDC. And that, that's just, the behavior and the argument led me to believe that. Now, it may have been ratified before, but I, you know, I wasn't here, so I won't be voting on that either.
And Commissioner, I assume that's the announced same conflict, just, okay.
And to me, that's aside, and apart from if you've asked for a ethics ruling, I mean, that, you know.
The ethics question that Mr. Osborne raised was, you know, per state statute, can a, can a Mark Davis who represents the county, can he go out and recommend another law firm to do something, to do a land use case for us, and then get, if the land use case settles, and then get part of the-
And Commissioner, that's the exact question I asked.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's the ethics question, can you, yeah.
I was a little more general. My experience with the Ethics Commission is, if you give them a specific statute and say, "Render an ethics opinion on this," they're gonna limit their inquiry to a very, very narrow extent. So, I wrote it as broadly as I possibly-
Yeah, so whatever you ask, but I think the ethics question is, can a sitting attorney recommend a law firm to carry on business for that particular entity that he represents, and then be part of the settlement that that law firm gets? So that kind of leads you to believe that there's some quid pro quo going on, but it's perception. So, the, yeah, so I think the question about, is that a conflict, is probably something we need to know. You know, is it a conflict for a sitting, let's say the TDC director hires the same lawyer as their personal lawyer? Is that a conflict of interest? You know, just things like that, that, that we really should be watching for, and I think we are, but I think that, that maybe in the past, it wasn't, wasn't looked at, but.
I see them as two separate issues, am I wrong? Ethics and this, two separate issues.
Yes, yes, I think, what I'm trying to do is separate from what the Ethics Commission would look at, yes ma'am.
Yeah.
What I'm asking you to do, yes ma'am.
I will do so.
What's your motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion to ratify.
I'm abstaining.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Commissioner, the next item, something besides BP, is a request for you to approve a volunteer agreement form for use by the county. We have a, apparently, a number of folks who do volunteer work, and let me separate out land use boards, this would not apply to land use boards, they have a separate set of rules that govern them, that have nothing to do with this agreement, okay? These, these volunteers need to have an agreement with the county and an understanding with the county per this agreement. There are certain things that they're just not going to have available to them, retirement, et cetera. There are certain things they do have available to them, which is workers' comp coverage, for instance, as volunteers, that they would fall under our policy if they get hurt. This is an agreement we were asked each of them to sign. Because there's a number of them, I want you to approve the form of the agreement, they're not going to be compensated in any way, so you would not necessarily have to approve each individual agreement as they're signed, as long as you've approved the form of the agreement, and that's what I'm asking you to do today.
Mike Flant sent you a-
I spoke with Mr. Flant, in fact, he raised the question of, of the boards and the, and the workers' comp issue, and we addressed it with him.
Good, okay.
Board's wishes.
Motion to approve?
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
The next item on the agenda is a parks fee resolution, is asking you to adopt by resolution a set of fees for use, for, for the public's use of our various fields, parks, and, and recreation areas.
I have a question concerning that, Shane, you wanna come forward?
Shane, in regards to the Exhibit A of the packet here?
Yes, sir.
There's a cost associated with the fields and lights, et cetera, et cetera-
Yes, sir.
-for Helen McCall, Jean Hurley, and We Care Park.
Yes, sir.
How is, would you approach an individual, let's say there's a family reunion using one of the pavilions at We Care Park, there's nobody there on the field, so they decide to go out there and play?
Yeah, what I tell everybody when they call is, it's a, it's a county park, the only time you would need to reserve it, if you wanna make sure that field is for you. If you call us and say, "We wanna reserve the field at We Care for our softball," we've had that happen before, normally I'll say, "Look, if you wanna take the chance, nine times out of ten, there's nobody out there, you can go play your softball game. But if you want to reserve it for two hours, then you have the right, when you get there, hey, we've got the field reserved." And what we do is, we send them an email saying, "This person has this field reserved at this date and this time, and they have it on their person," and that solves it. That's what we do.
I just didn't wanna see some family go out there and all of a sudden they run off because they didn't rent it.
No, 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 right.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second. The motion is second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner, the next item is a resolution asking you to give the county attorney's office, the county attorney the authority to satisfy code liens when they're paid. We oftentimes have very small ones for administrative costs for four hundred and fifty dollars. We file the order, the order becomes a lien, the folks come into compliance pretty quickly, and they need to have that lien satisfied. Instead of bringing all those to you, I'm asking for the authority to satisfy the code enforcement liens, or the office of the county attorney to satisfy code enforcement liens when paid. To do that, I'd need a resolution which is recordable, it actually has to be recorded in the public records, so that authority is shown to a title searcher when they're searching down the title, to allow us to do that.
When do we decide to file a lien? What's the threshold?
It's, it's, we've been working this pretty hard for the last six months. It's actually two liens. What happens is, the Code Enforcement Board will meet and say, "Mr. Melfeld, you're in violation of this particular section, you have sixty days to fix it. If you fix it within the sixty days, there will be no, no day-to-day lien imposed, or day-to-day fine imposed, which eventually, if you don't fix it, becomes a lien." But that order will also say, for instance, because we had to bring you to the board, we're gonna charge you four hundred and fifty dollars in administrative costs. We reduce that to an order and record it, and once we do that, that four hundred and fifty dollars essentially becomes a lien on the property until it's paid. Often, several times in the last year, the folks have done what they needed to do, the four hundred and fifty dollars is sitting out there, and they pay it, and we just need the authority to satisfy that lien through our office, so we don't have to come back to you each time. And by the way, if they are then fined two hundred and fifty dollars for a day for twenty days, we then reduce that to lien. If they satisfy, we need that authority to satisfy as well.
Board's wishes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Last item is, as we discussed before, every quarter or so, I try to provide to you a litigation update from our office. Oh, I skipped number eight, I'm sorry. Oh, this is a request to approve the multi-use pathways and pedestrian bridges over inland lake and water bodies resolution. This is the legislative finding that you need to make in order to expend TDC funds for, the clerk is smiling, TDC funds-
We're all smiling.
-for that purpose, and what I'd ask you to do is, is make a motion to approve the resolution, the legislative findings, and authorize the chairman to sign the resolution.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And then the next item is a litigation update, as I promised, we're gonna try to present this to you every quarter, ask you to ratify the actions we've taken. I've had a couple of questions, and I wanna address a couple of things specifically. One, one that's not on here, and I think it's not on here frankly, because we thought it was over, was a case called two thousand nine dash three LLC versus Walton County. Many, a couple of years ago, there was an agreement reached for a stipulated summary judgment on that case, which allowed the homeowner to essentially receive a building permit. That case, and also to dismiss any claims for damages against Walton County. That case is, needs to be reduced to a final judgment, so they, so we'll have a final judgment, essentially. We've been requested to stipulate to that. I think I've sent you guys copies of all that. I'm just asking for authority to go ahead and enter into that stipulation, so we can get that case out of the way and done. The summary judgment, I think, was entered in two thousand and eleven, so it just needs, the summary judgment just needs to be reduced to a final order. The only thing the final order does is say the exact same words as a stipulated, previously stipulated, final judgment.
Motion to-
Well, let me, let me go one other thing. There's also a case that was just filed, Amalfi versus Walker, or Walker versus Amalfi, I get the parties backwards.
Who?
It was a development order that was issued, I think it's near Alice Beach, I may be wrong about that. There was a challenge to the development order. Those parties have met and have settled, tentatively settled all the issues, that's why it didn't appear. So we are, we are, we hopefully will not have to present anything to you on that particular case. We are pleased that they've settled it, they should have settled it. And I think there was one other update since the preparation of this, oh, I'm sorry, it is on there, it's the first item in the, in the-
Gotcha.
Yeah, matrix. Make sure there was no other updates since the file, no, that's it, that's all the updates.
Mark, number twenty-seven on your list, this is a squatter down in my district.
Yes, sir.
It says sheriff's office unsuccessful, I don't know if that's because they can't find him, or he failed.
We've tried, yeah, we've tried, we can't serve him, but they're just never there to serve, so we're gonna try a private process server next, if we can't camp there and find him.
I think it's their second home, and they're only here during the-
No.
Only here during spring break, right?
All right, well, I would ask the sheriff's office to, maybe, I know how it works, about two or three times, you don't get them, different times they send it back, but we need to get that guy gone, for sure. I personally think he could already be arrested, but-
Can you move the stuff, can you move it there?
He's got a whole trailer he pulled in there.
We can't move it if it's on county property?
Well, I'm sure we can, and I think we have-
I wouldn't, I don't know that I would recommend that.
I know you wouldn't, but-
Can you nail the notice to the door?
No.
Does it have electricity and water?
Yeah. Septic system, whole nine yards. It was part of that buyout when the river flooded.
Right.
And he decided to just come in there, next to his grandmother's-
We can't have that shut off?
I'm sorry, what?
We can't have the water?
You can't have water, like, this is a shut off, because it's on our property?
Yes, sir, we can, but there's, there's some, there's some law that discourages doing that, frankly.
Probably on septic tank, too, that-
Without, without service, once we personally notify them, we can start taking action.
Well, let's see, whatever it takes to get it done.
Thank you, thank you, and I would need a motion to ratify the actions.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion, motion carries.
I was asked to retrieve information about the pictures that were delivered to the board and to my office after the, I think that was at the last meeting, I, after the meeting, I contacted Mr. Adkison and Mr. Brandon. meeting, I contacted Mr. Adkison and Mr. Brandon, Mr. Adkison and Mr. Clayton and Clay, so I don't get confused, Clayton and Clay came to my office, to the office of the county attorney, last week, I want to say Thursday of last week, showed me receipts for hotel football purchase tickets, and then came back in the afternoon, oh, excuse me, from Mr. Clayton, Mr. Clay Adkison's credit card, also showed me a copy of the emails where they ordered the football tickets, actually directly through the Chick-fil-A Bowl, not through Florida State, which often we do. Mr. Adkison and Mr. Clayton and Clay came back that afternoon and had with them a receipt, a credit card statement and receipt from the hotel showing payment by Mr. Brandon for the hotel stay, and for, I believe it was ground transportation in and around the city. So I was reasonably satisfied that they had paid their freight for that trip personally, and so without any other information being presented to me, I was planning to close my file on that matter, unless somebody had some other information they wanted me to look at.
I just, the question would be, what about Ms. Malenturno, because she was there, and, you know, the whole thing is about who paid for what, and if you're a county employee and a county consultant...
Ms. Meadows, I have not seen anything with Ms. Malenturno, I have not contacted her, I didn't have any contact information for her yet.
Yeah, Clayton Adkison, for the record, I guess that's the same intonation of Ms. Meadows that Ms. Harris wants to make, and perhaps you want to make today, is that we had someone or a vendor pay for our way to Atlanta. I think those receipts show clearly they were, they did not, but, but gentlemen, I have a greater problem here, and I'm not sure how you handle it, because, I mean, we have the same problem with the city council, and how somebody could get up during public meetings and make accusations against people that are totally unfounded, and that's what we had here by Ms. Harris, coming to you on the day that she did, with a set of photographs that she says, well, it's my understanding, I think she, in the case, she may have gotten them from Mr. Bagby, but let me take our concern.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Anyway, what our concern is this, is those photographs, one, are not public records, and I think for someone to release those, and we believe they came from the TDC computer, and I asked you, same as Ms. Harris asked you, but I asked you to conduct an investigation into where did those photographs come from, because if they were in that computer, and we believe they were, because we believe they were addressed two years ago, when there was public records request of Ms. Malenturno, and those things were set aside as being non-public records, because they were not a public record, just because they're in that computer does not make them a public record, but somebody had released them to Ms. Harris, obviously, and so we believe that either somebody at the TDC has done that, we ask you to conduct an investigation into who or how she obtained those photographs. Those photographs are of four people, one a minor at the Chick-fil-A Bowl, some of those photographs, she gave your photographs of Charlie Ward, the former Heisman Trophy winner of, at Florida State, sitting in a booth, what's that got to do, and how does that make it a public record of Walton County? That you now have those records, and somebody come up here and say, and again, let me reemphasize, we do not believe they are public records, and we don't believe you should be releasing them to anyone, because they're not a part of anyone's business here in this, you know, for the county. You know, again, I'm going to go back again to the same allegation I made earlier, part of this stems back to two years ago, and, and you know, you talk about conflict of interest, you're listening to a lady, and every time she comes up here and wants something done, I guess you react or try to do something, and I guess maybe out of fear that if you don't, she's going to file a lawsuit against the county. That has happened in the past, that's what happened in the Brandon situation, that's what happened in the situation with Lloyd Blue and George Miller in the county in regard to Chad Holly, but for the public's information, and maybe for this board, and I think this board does know that, this county has spent on those two litigations from the insinuation and allegations that Ms. Harris has made, and let me point out, she has not won one single point in either of those litigations at this point, yet this county, and I'm surprised that taxpayers are not worried about this, because this county has actually spent over $200,000 in, since 2012, just defending those lawsuits that she brought, and it has not won one point. She can be a vindictive person when she wants to be, and that's exactly what she's trying to do here with us, and unfortunately, by you accepting those photographs, you furthered her, you know, attempt to do so, but, you know, I hope that at this point you understand our position in regard to those photographs, if you reconsider whether or not you ever release those again, we will do what, but I do encourage you, and I ask you to take some action as to determine where those photographs came from and who released them to Ms. Harris. Thank you.
Let me, let me say, Mr. Adkison and I do have that disagreement, we've talked about it, that it's my legal opinion, once received with allegations of wrongdoing, that they become a public, they become a public record. Now, I know he disagrees with that, and I've...
In respect, we do.
And we've disagreed on other things before, but, but that certainly, my, our position at this point, it may change, but that's our position today, I haven't seen anything to the contrary to that today, but I understand he has a different, a different opinion about that, and that's, that's where we are. I will do whatever the commission asks me today.
One thing I would like to add to that is, is that, you know, people, anybody can sue anybody, you know, it doesn't matter if you win or lose, but you do have the right as American citizen to sue a local government or a state or whatever.
You do.
You know, you do have that right. Now, you know, whether they win or not, that's really not the point, but we spend a lot of money defending lawsuits on all different kinds of things, and when I, as a sitting commissioner, see photographs of a county employee, and a county contracted or whatever, I'm still not sure what the relationship is, but I'll read all this and figure that out, a county attorney and the sitting chair of the commission, or a commissioner, in a set of photographs where there's question as to, you know, the question comes to my mind, well, you know, who paid for this, and was it, was it a violation of the employee contract relation? So as a county commissioner, I have a duty to look into that.
Do you have a duty to look into where those photographs came from, Ms. Meadows?
I have a duty to look at those photographs, and that is a civil matter.
So how is that any less civil matter than what?
I'm not going to argue, I'm not going to get in an argument.
I asked you to take the same action, and give us the same courtesy that you gave her two weeks ago, when she made allegations that are totally unfalse, and that's, that's my concern, is she is up here making allegations that she has no basis or no proof whatsoever, but just a simple allegation.
Again.
You know, it would be no different than when I saw the two of you at lunch with Mr. Bagby the other day, and I get up here and say, "Hey, who paid for lunch? Is that TDC paying for lunch?
And that would be..."
Does that start an investigation? No, it doesn't.
That would be your right to ask that question, that would be your right to ask that question.
Commissioner, please.
All I'm saying is...
More than a time.
Okay, all I'm saying is that, that's the same point, is that anybody could get up and make an allegation, and if so, are you going to turn around at that point, and every time she gets up and makes an allegation, start, Mr. Davis has probably spent the better part of two weeks looking at that issue, and for what reason? You know, at some point in time, it's time to say to this one, you know what, we're tired of the allegations that there are no basis for, and that's all I ask you to consider.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Meadows?
Yeah, I mean, people can make allegations about anything, people come up here to the podium and make allegations all the time, it's our responsibility to look at them. You could have made, you know, anybody can make an allegation, we're just saying that government employees, consultants, contractors, need to be very careful about the perception about, because it's the perception that, that really, it's the perception of the matter that I think the citizens are interested in.
The perception of four people.
And now we've seen, now we've seen a contract that was particularly signed by the director of the TDC, I think this has had all ties in together, you've seen a contract that was signed by the TDC director to hire a firm, and then you see photographs of them in a $5,000 a night suite in Atlanta for the thing, so you can imagine the perception of that.
Let me reinforce one thing for you, it was not a $5,000...
Once again, I'm not finished, so it is my responsibility to look into those types of things, yeah, I would be interested to know where the photographs come from, but I do know that they're out there, they're out there on the internet, they're out there everywhere.
Because they were released to you, and now you've made them public to other people, that's why, they were not on the internet from anyone else that attended that party, Facebook.
We were handed photo, we were handed copies, we weren't, they weren't emailed to us, they were, they were paper copies, so we don't have the ability to just, to email them out to the public, and we're, we're not, that's not what we're doing, nobody has done that.
You have a release?
No one has done that.
Commissioner Commander?
One of my concerns in this is that there was a minor involved, he was 15 at the time. We need a way to move forward and solve these problems in the past, I mean, in the future, maybe it would be prudent if someone either had pictures or whatever, before presenting them to the full board, and perhaps, you know, blackening someone's name, you know, unintentionally, perhaps they should first go to, either to the county administrator, or to the chairman, or to the county attorney, and present them, and with them first, is that, can we do that in any way?
Well, Ms. Harris actually had, well, Ms. Harris told me about the pictures, and then they were delivered to my office, or delivered to me by Mr. Hudson later, and I did not inquire until after the meeting, two weeks, two weeks ago.
Okay, so you had them in advance?
Right, now, we did, just for your peace of mind, I guess, when we had public records requests that were responded to, we did black out the face of the minor. I'll be honest with you, I'm not entirely sure that's okay, but we did it anyway, because I had the same concern about a minor's picture being out there.
Actually, there wasn't, didn't Charlie Ward's son also?
Yeah, we blacked out the pictures of the minors, yes ma'am, or blacked out the face.
Well, I mean, that was, should that be done in every case, I mean, Ms. Harris brought them to you first, shouldn't we look at some kind of policy that be brought to you first?
Well, I mean, certainly you can, and you can, but you can't tell folks approaching...
Not, yeah.
One of the things we have to deal with as a public body is, the statute is pretty clear that we have to take public comments, we can, we can request that they be respectful and, and, and made in a decorous manner, but we have to take those public comments, and if they want to provide us documents, we can look at them. Now, where Clayton, I think, have a disagreement is, once they were provided to us under that allegation, I believe they became a public record, he doesn't believe that, and that's, we've disagreed on things before. So the short answer to your question is, yeah, we could have a policy, but to be honest with you, I don't know that it would be one that could be easily enforced in terms of people just showing up at the podium. I promise you, he's, Mr. Adkison struggles with the same issue at the city, I know we struggle with the same issue at the school board, where somebody just shows up and starts making, making claims and comments. I think what you did was an appropriate response, which is, Mr. Davis, look into it and report back to us, and that's precisely what I did.
Have you fulfilled all those public records requests?
To my knowledge, I, yes ma'am, I believe we have.
Okay, I just wondered if they were filled, okay.
I didn't check this morning to make sure.
But we still don't have the answer to Ms. Malenturno, her receipts as to what she paid for and what she didn't pay for, and if she didn't pay for it, did she file, or if she did pay for it, did she file a public disclosure gift, you know, because there are laws pertaining to that, so, you know, that, that needs to be answered.
And if one make, that's, again, I will do what you instruct me to do, if you want me to make contact and report back, I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah, I think that's important, because I think that's the missing piece here.
Two, one of the things I want to point out, I have no subpoena power in that area, I can't...
Oh, I know, but you can, you can...
Yeah, I can make an inquiry.
You can ask for them, because I think that's, I think the fact that that was a public, a director of one of our departments at the time is important.
I can ask, and they brought them on their own, but I can't require them to do that.
Yeah, that's my point, if we didn't have to respond, but we tried, we wanted to respond because the allegations made by Ms. Harris, we gave him, we showed him copies, I wasn't about to turn over all those receipts, because if you take his position, they become a public record, whatever was on that bill is none of your business, whatever, you know, whatever they went, other than that, and if for you to say it, I'm not finished yet.
Okay.
For it to say it was a $5,000 a night suite, the credit card does not reflect anywhere close to that being a $5,000, so, you know, you were asking for an investigation based on misinformation.
Commissioner Enfield?
I guess I have a question, Mr. Davis, it's almost like two different, whether, if she got a gift and didn't report it, that's, that's the problem she's got to face, but could I just say that for our comfort, would we ask that we take a look at the TDC financials and see, did we reimburse her for that trip?
Yes.
And could you report back on that?
Be happy to.
Ms. Harris?
These pictures were not from a TDC computer, a camera was dropped off at my office with pictures already printed out, and there's not these few pictures, there is probably hundreds of pictures, of all different kinds of things, so this was not from the TDC, and whoever said Mr. Bagby gave them to me, that's between Mr. Bagby and who said it, but I can guarantee you, they were dropped off at my office in a brown envelope with the camera, and I still have the camera, so it was not Mr. Bagby in a TDC computer. As a matter of fact, when Mark Davis and I met after the planning board meeting, I told Mark very specifically, and Don Riley took very copious notes, I told Mark specifically about the pictures that were dropped off at my office, I told him I was not there, they were taken by a girl at my front desk. I told Mark what some of the pictures were, and I said, "I would like for you to just check into it, I don't want to have to give them to the commission, Mark, I would like for you to check into it." Many things were discussed at that meeting about how Mark should get the pictures, Mark suggested, his first suggestion was, that he contact Scott, and have Scott come to my office and look at them. Then his suggestion was that I contact, he contact Clay, and Clay come to my office. Well, after the investigation with FBI, I didn't really think either one of those was a real good idea, and Don Riley told Mark, he did not think having them come to my office was a good idea, all I asked for was for Mark to take a month and look into it, Mark didn't do it. So all I'm telling you is, those pictures never had to come to you, they could have been handled by Mark and Clay and Don, and they would have never been given to you as a public record, had they been handled by your attorney. I did not give Mark the pictures, someone else gave Mark the pictures, so I can tell you, I never handed them to Mark, Jim Bagby never let me look at a computer, Jim Bagby never printed off anything on a computer, as a matter of fact, I talked to Jim and asked him, did he know about them, and he said no, but Larry Jones also knew those pictures were floating around out here, prior, a month prior to any of this going on, so Clayton, in one hand you say, Ms. Harris hasn't won a thing, one of my cases is still in court in Santa Rosa, so just be careful on that. Second thing is, then he says, "The county spent $180,000 something thousand on my lawsuit, and I spent $12,000 to Clay, and paid the county $12,000, and Scott's not on the board anymore, personally, I think my money was well spent."
Okay, where are we at?
It was only for information, I think, and I think Mr. Enfield's giving me...
Hold on.
And then the last item, commissioners, is approval of the contract for maintaining the multi-use trails in Walton County. This bid was awarded at the last meeting, this was one of those that had a RFP, so we didn't have the contract ready for you at the last meeting, between the last meeting and this meeting, we were able to get the contract drafted, and I know Mr. Bagby's more than eager to get this started, so we wanted to add this to tonight's agenda, or to this morning's agenda, and ask you to approve it.
Motion to approve?
Second. Got a motion and a second, any questions?
Yeah, this is specific to just the bike path, is that correct?
Multi-use path.
Multi-use path, I'm sorry, multi-use path, and, and I know that most of us got a, an email from Mr. Sullivan during the week about the fact that, at least along Scenic Golf Drive, the bike path for the most part runs along the north side, but on, on the south side of Scenic Golf Drive is a... but on, on the south side of Scenic Gulf Drive is essentially only places that are rented out to tourists and there's trash that gets thrown there too. How do we, how do we address our finding that we're getting TDC to maintain and pick up the trash along the multi-use path when immediately across the street from definitely places that are, quote, for tourists, almost only, similar amounts of trash? And yet, one side can get cleaned up and the other side gets, gets left. And I, and I went down after I got the email from Mr. Sullivan and took a look and he was correct. And so how do we, how do we incorporate that into a finding to, to further use of tourist funds to, to make cleanup good along both sides? Now, I saw Holiday Road, which was also in Mr. Sullivan's thing, which had been cleaned up, I think, by Public Works crews. But that's my question. I mean, this would seem like a good springboard as step one, authorizing, because the tourists are using the multi-use path, to specifically say, and immediately across the street, maybe amend it to allow the collection of debris, litter, or whatever you want to, that's on that.
They already do that right across from where Mr. Sullivan lives, right? Because that's public access, so the TDC, not, not these people, but the TDC picks up that trash. Am I not correct, Mr. Bagby? You know, right across from Surfside?
Yes, Commissioner, at the public parking areas and there's a public.
Yeah.
There's three issues here. So at the public parking areas, yes, we do. And we have trash cans along that parallel parking that we also empty there in that public parking area. The legislative finding, because I asked this question when we were drafting the RFP, is this the right of way or is this the bike path with the adjacent right of way to it? And the answer was, the bike path with the multi-use path, I'm sorry, with the adjacent right of way. So the other side of the road, it would be maintained still by the county Public Works Department. Because it is, the other side, there's no, it's not contiguous walking or there's no contiguous sidewalk or bike path or multi-use path or anything on there. Some of it's parking in front of townhomes and things like that, which is private property. And so the second issue, the contract and what the legislative finding was for, was for the bike paths. So Holiday Road is a good example. There is no bike path, multi-use path there. There's nothing for us to maintain. And the, the maps are attached, I believe, and on mine, is what we're going to maintain.
And I agree with regard to Holiday Road. However, if you take a look, because do you agree that the bike path for the most part on Scenic Gulf Drive is on the north side of Scenic Gulf Drive?
Yes, sir, except right down on the eastern end.
Okay, but for the most part?
West, eastern end.
Okay, but for the most part, it's on the north side. And on the south side, almost all of the facilities that are along there are tourist related.
Yes, restaurants or.
Excepting the restaurants, but I mean, they're, they're not housing developments where they're permanent residents and living there. For the most part, they're, they're tourist related.
Yes, sir, second homes, yes, sir. Yes, Commissioner.
And along that right of way, that would be county right of way, would we not also have the opportunity to make a legislative finding, have, give us the opportunity to make a legislative finding that, that because that is so predominantly tourist related, that the trash in the right of way could be accommodated by a similar contract?
I'm, I'm not an attorney, I'm not going to advise you on what legislative findings you can make or not make, but I would tell you that if you make that for Scenic Gulf Drive, then you're going to make that same legislative finding for 30A. Then you're going to make that same legislative finding for the feeder roads that run perpendicular to 30A. And the $250,000 contract just went up to about $750,000 to $800,000, which.
Can I?
I appreciate that.
Can I add something?
Yeah, but just let me finish one thing. And I, I can't speak to the 30A section of it. I'm not near as familiar with that as I am with regard to the Scenic Gulf Drive one. But because it is almost, almost totally tourist related on the south side and it is part of the problem that needs to get addressed somehow. And I don't know how we lost the prison crew that was, was going up and on the thing.
Well, we don't.
But is it something that we could look at?
Well, let me, let's back up because I think I was the one who proposed that we do this a year and a half ago at the, at the strategic meeting in April because of the use that the specifically multi-use paths got. And when we wrote up the RFP and talked about it, it was to be the tourist corridors, to pick up the trash on the tourist corridors, specifically on the, on the edges of the right of way, rights of way. And the tourist corridors included 30A, Scenic Gulf Drive, small sections of some north-south roads that, that went up. So I think that the interpretation could be that tourist corridor included both sides of, of the right of way. And so obviously, when they're out picking up trash, you don't want them to just pick it up on one side of the road.
If it's on the right of way.
Yeah, yeah. And so that was my understanding of, was that it was a, it was a trash pickup, trail maintenance, landscaping type thing. But particularly, the trash pickup was, was an important component of that on both sides of the road because it is such a, such an issue. I mean, if you go down there now, you know, there's just trash everywhere because people just throw things everywhere. So that was, that was my understanding of it. Now, Jim, you may have, in the negotiations and all the machinations, it's been a year and a half. So, or at least a year. But it was my understanding that it would be both sides of the right of way, just, you know, the shoulders of the right of way on the tourist corridors.
And the way, and Jim, don't let me get in your business. But the way to solve this, I think, and I, I understand what you're saying, may be to let us draft a separate resolution for non-pedestrian or multi-use path right of way. And then look at maybe a separate request for proposals.
Well, I thought that tourist corridor kind of covered it all. Now, of course, you don't want to go to Frangista and pick up their trash because they're single family homes. So the tourist corridor, to me, would be, you know, the boardwalks along that stretch. Just kind of common sense type.
I'm just afraid we probably drafted the resolution too narrowly. So let me look at the resolution and then I can report back to you.
What does it say in the contract?
And the AG opinion was that we could address, you know, multi-use paths because they were heavily used by the tourists. I don't think that it's going to, they're going to give us the okay to just go pick up trash everywhere in, in the county, in South Walton.
And that's why the AG opinion specifically called out the multi-use paths as part of the, and the phrase escapes me, but it was part of the, not the ecological experience, but part of.
Yeah, part of the visitor experience.
The, the concern, and that, that was the way the legislative finding was drafted and that's the way the RFP was drafted. The slippery slope that I think most of the bed tax community would be concerned about is, where, where do you stop? You know, the 30A, both sides of 30A, the 100-foot right of way or 66-foot right of way. It varies, as y'all know. Well, how about 98? Most of that's tourists, especially on Saturday. Maybe we should pick it up. And then 331 coming down. There, there's just a, it has to be supported by a legislative finding. Whatever y'all find as a legislative finding, we will turn into an RFP and bid it. But I would ask that you approve the contract we have so we can address the trash issues that are, that are on the multi-use path now.
I think this should go forward. I agree that Mr. Bagby, this needs to get approved now. But Mr. Davis, could you at least explore for us?
Absolutely.
Those other possibilities and then we can, can give it deliberation. But I think you got a motion and a second to go ahead and approve this.
Right. I have, I have two points. I know that Lynn York was talking to the people around, especially along Scenic Gulf Drive, about some of these having a third day pickup and they, you know, because the county pays for two and having a third day pickup, which, you know, would help them as their renters because nobody wants to rent a house on Saturday and come into trash. And I know that our prisoners, our work crew was doing that. So we need to find out, you know, why they're not doing that side of the road anymore and get them back at it.
Yeah, because I think trash is a huge issue.
Big issue.
But we can't, we can't pass it off to the TDC totally. I mean, I think they can maintain the bike paths, but I think the amount of trash that's down there on every road is.
And I wouldn't, didn't mean the trash, that's in the trash barrels and trash cans. There's a lot of.
Litter, litter, yeah. Yeah, we need to find out, Mr. Administrator, why, I mean, why did they stop the, does anybody know off the top of their head?
I don't. We'll certainly make a note to my.
Because they were going down there, yeah.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Miss, thank you, that's all I have.
Well, it's about time.
You had enough. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. The public hearing is to approve or disapprove a resolution amending the budget to recognize $288,230 in proportionate fair share funding to construct northbound and southbound turn lanes at the intersection of US 98 and County Road 395.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
A motion open. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are now in a public hearing. Is there any public comments concerning the topic? Seeing none?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have to close.
Motion to a close.
Oh, come on.
Don't move.
Aye.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve.
No, I'll second.
No, no, we'll, no.
You gonna go fight over it?
No.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I would like to ask.
Motion carries.
I would like to ask, whoops, when that, when they would begin and when they could, would be finished with it?
I don't.
I'll get, I'll get with them, I'll get with them later.
Get your answer to that, I don't.
Let's just get the money.
I'll get with them later.
All right, Commissioner Meadows, any other thing?
Yeah.
Commissioner Commander?
No, sir.
Mr. Enfield? Mr. Pridgen?
No.
Mr. Chapman, no. You got any additional public comments? Seeing none? Is there any, for staff, any recap?
You got everything.
Everything, got it? Okay. All right, I tell you what, it'll take five minutes.
Ten.
All right. Eleven, yeah, all right.
This is my fault, Mr. Chairman.
His fault, Mr. Chairman.
Actually, it was my fault.
It's his fault, Mr. Chairman.
Regardless of whether he did or not.
It's his fault.
Mr. Wayne, I guess you're up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have 15 items on the, I'm kidding, only, only three, I'm kidding. Only three items on the agenda and the, and they're all quasi-judicial, so I'm assuming they need to be sworn in by the county attorney.
Where is he?
Just come on, take the chair.
Yeah, you can take his chair.
I thought he had a drink.
A stiff one.
Can anybody who expects to testify before the board on any of these quasi-judicial items please stand to be sworn? And I guess raise your right hand. Do all of you swear that any testimony you give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Okay. And I guess has anyone, or have any of the commissioners received any comments about any of the items, the quasi-judicial items?
I have, and I presented it to the clerk.
Okay. And does anybody have any objection? Oh, I'm sorry.
Here, lean in, here. Here, send your guy along.
And is, is there any objection to notice as published? No, okay, I think we can go forward.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Wayne.
Mr. Chairman, the first item on our agenda is the John Minger Small Scale Amendment dash thirteen, 13 dash 018. I'll ask Tim Whaler, senior planner, to come up and give a brief presentation. He is the project manager for this application.
Good morning. All right, let's see if I can make some room there. Okay, so this is a, sorry. It's a small scale future land use amendment application submitted by Kermit George as the agent. It's requesting approval for amendment of future land use designation from a state residential to general commercial. And this, this request is on an eight-point-five acre portion of a parcel, of a single parcel identified as 23, 2N191800, 0210010. And the request is a little bit unique. As you have seen in your packet, this is, this is one parcel, one parcel ID and one deed on the property. It's a 17 acre, 17.9 acre total parcel. This request is for the eastern half of the parcel. The western half is already general commercial. And so the, the parcel did have an approved lot fusion that was done in September of 2011. That fusion was recorded at the clerk, but separate deeds were not drafted and separate parcel IDs were not allocated to the project. So as part of this request, we required that they did a lot fusion to rejoin the original parcel. There again, that, that was recorded at the clerk, the fusion, to get it back to the original parcel. And other than that, we did receive one written public comment late last week and I'll give these to the clerk here. And the public comment was submitted by Mr. Tim Pauls. I believe he is here today to comment on the project. And so based on that lot fusion, the project does meet the comprehensive plan locational criteria requiring that it be fronting a arterial roadway, which it fronts 331.
All right, let, let me make sure that I totally understand what you're saying. Is that, I, I know that the, I'll say the parcel in front, because I remember us doing it, which actually is on 331, we've already made it commercial. Now, this piece is how far back from 331 itself?
670.
670 feet.
Yes.
And now you're going to join them and make them one parcel again?
Well, when, it was initially one parcel and it's still recorded indeed as one parcel. So from a technical standpoint, the, the parcel does front 331 and the comp plan language specifically requires that the parcel front Highway 331, so.
It's kind of splitting hairs, isn't it?
Was this deferred last time because the parcel wasn't fronting onto 331 when it was brought before us for consideration?
The first consideration was only for the portion to the west. So it was, it was a split land use at that point on this single parcel.
I'm talking about within the past three months.
Yes, correct.
My recollection was it was the parcel to the east that was brought before the board with the consideration that it was supposed to be fronting onto 331.
That's correct. And the confusion was in the fact that the title search in the application showed it as one parcel and me and staff reviewed it as one parcel. The property appraiser had it as one parcel. So that's why I moved forward, assuming that the parcel fronted 331. That's, and so, once we got our ducks in a row and, and reviewed the clerk documents to see that a fusion was actually recorded, that's when we continued the project to allow for the fusion to get it back to the original configuration of the parcel.
Okay, being a bean counter, what's, what's required in order to get a fusion approved?
The requirements are that it, it meets the Land Development Code and then they provide the documentation, which is certified surveys, to get the fusion established. But the main criteria is, we review it as planning to make sure that it meets the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan.
And is, does it get approved at a higher level or is it just with planning?
It, it's approved by the director, the planning director.
When we approved the original and made it commercial, were we given dimensions? Were we given so many feet by so many feet by so many feet?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure you had a legal discretion, I'm not quite sure.
But it didn't include this one, then?
No, ma'am.
Let me ask, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
The question is, this is on 331, correct?
Yes.
And we have established a commercial corridor on 331, haven't we? That is going to go back 300 feet. It's going to be the overlay and the master plan with all the standards. So this doesn't really coincide with our idea that commercial should be 300 feet, that all properties within 300 feet would most likely end up commercial.
And Commissioner, I think it's, I think it's our position that they technically meet the locational criteria with a fusion. However, it's at the discretion of the board to, to approve the small scale amendment.
Yeah. Yeah. The only thing is, you know, it does, it does encroach into a state resident. The only thing is, you know, it does, it does encroach into a state resident, is that a state residential? State residential.
Where is, you say state?
State residential.
State residential, okay.
I'm sorry. So, you've got a, you've got kind of a, we used to call them spot zonings, but, you know, so you're surrounded by, a state residential is what, one house per five acres or something?
I believe that's correct.
Yes.
You know, I mean, I mean, it just all depends on, do you want to look after the large estates and large farms that are gonna be surrounding these areas and not encroaching to them? Or do you want to just kind of?
Well, I think we need to look at it, if you see 331 there.
Yeah.
Where that intersects is just north of our firehouse down there.
Yeah.
And it's gonna go way to the east of the present roadbed there.
What, the fire?
No, the road.
The road.
The hospital is located south of there, and.
Do y'all have drawings of the?
No, I mean, north of there, I'm sorry.
Do you have drawings of the, of how the road, how the four laning of 331 is gonna impact these?
No, ma'am, I don't have that, we don't have those records.
Is that what you're saying?
There's a certain point right there, just about that curve, they've had to move it to the east because they didn't want to disturb the historical schoolhouse that's right there at Woodlawn. So, they've had to shift the roadbed to the east, which is gonna probably eat up a portion of that western boundary line there, where it's red above Indian Creek Ranch Road.
That, from that point on, towards the hospital, it's on, it's east side.
It's east on the east side.
It impacts the hospital, too.
But I guess my question is, and then if we, if we approve this one, then what about the guy that's over here? Is he gonna want to be commercial? And then the guy over there want to be commercial because he's touching commercial, because he's touching commercial, because he's touching commercial?
Well, I think, if, give me a minute. As far as this quarter designation, it doesn't mean, you maintain your present designation. If you want to try to get it through and get it commercial, then you can go so and do so. But it doesn't necessarily mean somebody's got property there that may be within that corridor wants to make it commercial.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Commander, I think this is a unique issue here because you have a, a long rectangular piece of property, and technically it is contiguous to 331, which meets the location criteria. However, when you look at it, as Commissioner Meadows pointed out, it, it does, it is an intrusion into that state residential, which even to the east of that is, is large scale ag, I think. And so, you've kind of got a, a bit of an intrusion going in there. It technically does meet the location criteria.
What's allowed in the general commercial?
Yeah, that's, number.
Land use.
Basically, just about anything, any commercial use you can think of, really. I mean, just to make it, to make it short, but.
Auto repair shop.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am, I believe that, that would, that would also be in general commercial.
Gasoline.
It's a general commercial use.
Service stations.
But now, as far as the other parcels, I mean, to meet the location criteria, that parcel would have to be contiguous. So, as far as anything, now, anything that's south of this piece of property, for example, if they didn't have that conjuguity to 331, they would not meet the location criteria. However, it would, it'd be pretty obvious if you've got commercial on two sides, you know, so it does present an issue of potential domino effect if, if that's a concern of the, of the board.
Indian Creek Road is.
Is there anybody here from the applicant? Mr. Jones here. I'm sorry, yeah, come forward, please.
Kermit George, Southern Engineering Group, agent for Mr. Minger.
Okay, Mr. George, just north of this location is Mobile Village Road. Now, that is one that's assisted living, is it not, for Coop, I believe? And they had to go and find another location because the right of way is fixing to take that whole assisted living out. Is that correct?
Well, I'm not sure about that.
Okay.
I know the right of way expansion is gonna have an effect on all of those parcels.
Yes, it is.
That was Mr. Minger's concern.
Okay.
He was gonna lose part of that western parcel.
You, you, right. That western parcel, there's probably already been some negotiations or settlement concerning how much are they gonna need of that western parcel?
I don't know.
You don't know?
That's not what it feels to me, no, sir.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add concerning this?
Other than just his concern was, he was losing some of that, some of his western edge over there, and he wanted to try to get the whole thing together to make it, you know, more viable piece of property.
Okay. Commissioners, as far as that red section, the east side of 331 is right. I'm not sure how much of that western block there has been given to the state or state bought it or whatever.
I'm not sure either, I'm not sure.
We're not sure how much it is, but I know Mobile Village Road up there, that whole area in there is, they've lost all those homes back in there.
Well, I think it'll probably be substantial, you know.
I think so.
Well, I'd like to have something other than probably. I mean, I'd like, you know, it'd be nice if we knew where the road was going, and then that would make it pretty clear.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like us to, at the next meeting, we could, we could get with Public Works or DOT, whoever's, and then maybe get more definitive plans for that section of the roadway and bring it back so we can make a more informed decision as far as how much right of way is being taken on, on the.
I think that's why, it would probably clear up some stuff.
Yeah, I think that would help a lot because, you know, if the road's going straight through there, then, you know, this piece on the east side below the, south of this piece may go commercial as well. If the road, you know, so it really does figure into the picture, I think.
Mr. Davis, this is not one of those eminent domain lawsuits that we're party to, is it?
Actually, I think we are party to this one, yes.
So, this one is an eminent, okay.
Commissioner, don't quote me, I think we are actually named on every one of them up and down 331 because we have right of way.
On the listing that you gave us earlier, there was about half a dozen of them.
Most of those were 331, yes.
Okay.
If not all of them.
So, this is an eminent domains lawsuit on this parcel?
Yes, sir.
I understand his problem, and I would like some answers to those, but I also understand the people that live down that road that do have farms and horses and chickens and that sort of thing. Again, my, my concern is, where do we stop? I say, if we make that commercial, then the, the one contiguous to it could possibly be made commercial, and then the one contiguous to it could possibly be made. So, where do we, where do we draw, where do we stop it? I guess it's my question that I'd like answered.
Well, I understand. Commissioner, I agree with that, and the thing is, what's been asked is to try to overlay on that where the roadbed, the new roadbed is going in there and right of way. And then look at it again to see if they've lost four, five, whatever it is, 100 feet there on that west side and determine that. Because I, I think that's where we need to go.
But I think, I think too, when you see the four lane comes to fulfillment when it's constructed, you're gonna see more of these projects come up than, they're gonna, it's gonna grow, that corridor's gonna grow, and they're gonna have commercial along that corridor. And.
That's.
A lot of the homes are gonna be going away, but they're gonna be outlined homes, you know, back behind those.
Yeah, that's why we, I think we need that whole thing mapped and put on our GIS layers so that when this comes up, we can see what.
Right. And, and, Mr. Chairman, we'll, we'll do our best to get that information, overlay it on, on the actual parcel boundaries so we can see, see what we're dealing with here. And I'm assuming that if we can continue it to the next meeting, we can have that by the next meeting. Would you?
You know, because that's why I think it's so extremely important that we balance the new commercial that's going to go along that corridor, and we know it will, with the people that have lived there for 30 and 40 years, and now, you know, I mean, they have a right, as we've been discussing earlier in this commission, they have a right to peaceful enjoyment of their homes that they've paid for and, you know, and tax revenue all the year. So, we've got to try to balance this, and let's do it right on the front end rather than the back end.
We'd need a motion to continue to the next board meeting.
Shall move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is number two on your agenda.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Look, Mr. Pauls, I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Mr. Wayne was standing in the way.
Yeah, Wayne was there.
Big bear.
Big bear.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners.
Just for state record, your name for the record?
My name for the record is Tim Pauls, and I'm a property owner on Indian Creek Ranch Road. I'm very familiar with this road now for a year, as I've traveled it just about every day. The current state of Indian Creek Ranch Road is that it's a dirt road. It's one lane in places, and it's subject to often road and bridge washouts. It has a very dangerous intersection at 331, and you take your life in your hands if it's a Saturday and you're trying to turn. While Indian Creek Ranch Road, like others nearby, are scheduled for improvement, it looks like it may be a few years away before that happens. Part of the problem with this application is just the, the size and configuration of the parcel. The extension of commercial into this area beyond the first parcel that is already commercial would really put the, the onus on general agriculture in terms of a buffering. It is, in my opinion, absolutely not wise to designate this last half piece general commercial at this time without knowing exactly what the configuration is going to be of 331 and when Indian Creek Ranch Road is gonna actually be improved. What is shown on your screen is a yellow line on the staff photos is a green line, which is general agriculture. So, this piece is being proposed to come right up against general agriculture. And general agriculture as a designated area and land use actually needs to be protected, and it's protected by buffering. That's what a state residential does. So, this piece actually makes sense to be commercial in the front, transition to a state residential, and then you have general agriculture. There are many folks moving into the north part of the county because they want to find a bit quieter lifestyle than what they may have experienced, as I have, for 20 years living on 38. It's really important. We're gonna see this county grow like we've never seen it before, and it's important to be able to protect the large general agricultural operations. Many people that move next to a general agriculture designation do not expect what happens in farming communities. They don't expect organic fertilizer to be used, and they don't know what it smells like. But then they learn. It's not the general agriculture's problem, and that's why the buffering is important. So, and what I'm trying to say to you is that this action is premature. Perhaps someplace down the road, there would be the opportunity to reconsider whether or not it's really viable. There is no indication from any real feasibility study that there is a need for commercial 2,300 feet deep into Indian Creek Ranch Road. So, at this time, I would urge you to vote against adoption of this small scale amendment. Thank you.
Mr. Pauls, I've got a quick question. You, you're on East Indian Creek.
That's correct.
What's the dividing line that gets to be West Indian Creek and, and East Indian Creek? Because this is on West Indian Creek.
Oh, I understand, but I don't know what the dividing line is. I mean, that's, that perhaps is GIS or something in the.
Not a roadway that, that.
There is, but this is a continuous road. So, I come in from the south, turn right on West Indian Creek Ranch Road, and at some point, I'm on East Indian Creek Ranch Road. That, that point may change, but I don't know where, where it changes.
Commissioner, I think. This didn't happen when you were on the board, though, right?
What's that?
This didn't happen when you were on the board.
Of course not. It was all clear then.
Bill, just so you know, I believe it's right there where it makes a 90-degree turn and starts heading back to, to the north on, to 280.
I don't know who designs these things. That's the same in my neighborhood. I'm on Shady Creek Lane, all of a sudden, the road turns into Country Manor, and then again, it turns back to Shady, you know, who thought of this? I mean.
Well, the developer did.
Develop, okay. Let's blame it on somebody, yeah.
Any other questions?
No, I don't believe so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so are we gonna ask staff? Or do you need to?
I think you already voted on it.
I think we have voted, okay.
If, if I could, just a moment, Mr. Chairman. I heard some interesting comments there regarding properties along 331 and the impact of the expansion of the highway. It would probably be good direction for the board to give staff that as, as we move forward until this road is completed, that any project along that corridor show that, reflect what 331, what the impact's gonna have. So, I don't, we can do that from staff level, but I think.
We sure can.
Why don't we just go ahead and get a map of all of it now?
Well, GIS probably could load it up really quickly.
Yeah.
Everything you printed out would have it on it.
Yeah.